Okay. Take notice that a regular meeting, called meeting of the Crime Control and Prevention District of the Directors of the City of Balcony Heights will be held on the 23rd day of June 2025 at 5:30 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas, act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including among others, the following business. Call to order, call to quorum. We've got a quorum, we've got one missing, Mr. Sellers. Do we have any citizens to be heard in crime control?
We do, yes. Mr. Quin, let's say it.
Okay, Mr. LaSaya.
Fund our police department in its entirety that we don't look into cutting or dismissing or minimizing any of the services that we have as to our residents. It's imperative that we augment or even increase whatever we can do to continue to have the top quality notch service that we have and whatever we can do to fill the positions that might be vacant at this time. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other citizens to be heard?
None other than signed up at this time.
Thank you. Business items. The Board will conduct a public hearing on the district's proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Is this where we need to open the? What do you call it? The? We need to open a, it's 5:32. We're going to open the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the Board, or I guess it's afternoon. So tonight, we have two business items that we're looking at. The first is the public hearing that was just opened, and that's on the district's proposed budget for FY '26. And then the next item, we will vote to adopt the district's budget for FY '26. After that, it goes to council, as your role as council members tonight, one of your agenda items is to accept this budget, and you'll do that later on in council. After that's been done, it's going to get incorporated into the city's overall budget, where it's going to change over the summer. And over the summer is when we'll have the chance to change this all up. So in essence, this is kind of a formality. We have to get something started early. Local government code says that we have to start this in March and April, and the purpose of that is to just get something into the budget, and then we'll have time over the summer to change it as you see fit. Okay? Now, the handouts you have tonight are the same ones you've had since April. There's nothing changed. So we'll start out with the application for district funding. It's the same one that was presented in May. It looks like that, if you need to see what that looks like. And that's what got it all started off for the Crime Control District. We put out the advertisement that, hey, if you have anything you want to include in this budget, let me know. Nobody responded, so I came forth with this one. And so we're asking for two things. Number one is for Justice Center operations and maintenance costs of $161,000. And then item number two is personnel costs for $917,000, or nearly $918,000. The personnel cost, that's going to be about 45% of your total police budget for next year, and that's roughly eight positions of the 17 and a half that they're authorized. And that's it, just those two items. And so then we plug that, those numbers into your line item budget, which is your next attachment, and it looks like that. And just starting at the top, we start out with our fund balance. We're estimating about $348,000 at the end of the year going into next year as your fund balance, and that's a good, healthy, a little over three months of fund balance. Now, your general fund has to have three months of fund balance, your Crime Control District doesn't, but since it has payroll, I've always left about three months in there in case, you know, a sales tax take ahead or something, then we're covered on our salaries. Your next grouping there is revenues. Of course, the majority of your revenue is from sales taxes. One-third of all the city's sales taxes goes into the Crime Control District, the other two-thirds, of course, goes into your general fund. Your next grouping of expenses is broken out by personnel and operating expenses, and you can see those same two numbers that we just talked about. Personnel cost, $917,775, and that $161,026 for your operating expenses, which is the Justice Center maintenance and whatnot. So all totaled, your budget is balanced at $1,078,800, revenue equals expenses. And again, this budget is arbitrary, it's going to change. There's no way this is going to get approved. We already know the payroll costs are coming down, and we'll brief all that in the budget cycle that starts on July 7th. So at this point, I'll open it up to any questions that you guys might have.
Mr. Chair. I move that the Board adopted the district's proposed fiscal year budget.
We have a, we have an item on the floor. Anybody second? Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Eversol. Any more discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Messick.
Yes, sir.
I don't recall if it was the last Crime Control meeting, or if it was our regular council meeting, but I remember we had brought up the topic about, you know, getting some cameras or other preventive items.
Yes, sir.
And so just wanted to see at what point do we try to work that in? Because I know you said this is kind of like a work in progress, right?
Yes, sir.
So where, at what stage are we going to have those discussions?
Yes, sir. So we'll present a budget calendar tonight, too. That's on your council agenda, but it all kicks off tentatively now on July 7th with the budget workshops and whatnot, and that's when you can throw it all out there and say, let's do this, where can we put this? And so you'll have ample opportunity over the summer. And so we know of that, and we know Mr. Burton had brought up the idea of some park issues and they could cover bus stops and all that, so we've been taking note. But over the summer is when we would modify this. It is just easier because, I mean, now you can spend all your time doing it now, but you'd just be cutting into your time when you should be discussing the budget. So it's easier to just adopt it, throw it in there, and then move forward.
Okay.
So basically, this is just a placeholder?
Yes, sir. Very much so.
For the discussion started.
Yes.
So that's, this is y'all's opportunity to start thinking about wish lists, put on the, get them budgeted if we so desire.
Mr. Burton, may I recommend that we close the public hearing, because we're already in the number two, but?
Sure. Let's, we're going to close the public hearing at 5:38, and we'll open up item number two, where the vote, the Board will vote to adopt the district's proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Okay. So we're already into it.
Yes, sir.
We have a, we have one on the, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I got some questions, just so everybody can understand what this budget is for. It's basically to fund those eight other police officers that have the budget under there. And I asked some questions, and you asked, probably, because I wanted to make sure I understood, as I was scrutinizing these numbers very carefully. And the reason for the increase, from my understanding, on the Justice Center operation and maintenance expenses, is basically they're anticipating utility co-op, the energy costs, more than what was anticipated originally. They budgeted for that to make sure that there might be an overrun in that, and so appropriately, they're looking at 154 as opposed to 161. That's where that comes in on that one. Also, for possibly air conditioning, any kind of, doesn't exist now, but may. So that's why he's looking at that. And then I asked him about, why was it at 3% of the cost of living adjustments? And it's, he explained to me, it's more like 2.2% of the COLA increase that we're possibly anticipating, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Right now, it would be 2.2%. Yes, sir. But we go by November, right?
They may save us some money there, if we go with that 2.2. And then they're anticipating also an increase in the healthcare and the municipal retirement system, but they do look at possibility, possibility of decrease under our workers' compensation. We may save a little money there, but spend a little bit more in the team where it's retirement. And that's the reason they had to make the adjustment from the original before y'all got on the case. And so that's where we're at now. That's why I said, let's go ahead and just adopt it, move forward with it, because later you can work through the process to either add or delete down the process, particularly to this budget. The one you're referring to will be the general offer. That's where your wish list can come in, your deductions, your reduction of revenues, I mean, excuse me, reduction of expenditures and possibly increasing revenue in that general offering, which will start somewhere in October, but we're going to get started early, right?
Yes, the overall budget is approved end of September, and it takes effect one October, and the budget process, of course, starts in July.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
One last question. He talked about the COLA. Do we have like a benchmark or an index that we use to make that decision?
Yes, sir. And it's pretty much governed on the police side by their collective bargain agreement. We go by what social security issues in November.
Okay.
In the month of November, and so that's kind of hard. We kind of have to guess what it's going to be. We'll pass a budget, say, 2.4%, because we think it might go up. It might be 2.1% or it might be a little higher. But usually, it's, you know, we over budget just to make sure we're covered.
Sure.
But it's the November one.
Anybody else? Anybody? Going, 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 gone. What is the, what do they call it? The CP? Or the?
The CPI?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, it's running around 2.2, but it's bouncing around from three down to 2.2. Who knows what it's going to be? July is usually a pretty good indicator, so when we got July's down, that's pretty much what we'll plug into the budget, and hopefully it'll go down after that.
Okay, so there's no many, no more questions. Let's go ahead and call for a vote. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yay.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yay.
Mr. Eversol.
Yay.
Ms. Weaver.
Yay.
That's 5-0 with Mr. Sellers.
Yeah.
Or whatever you want to move with Mr.
No, you're right, five. It is, I'm sorry. You're right.
Out of that, I'll adjourn this meeting, or do I? Anybody?
A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Hernandez.
My second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds, and let's take a vote. Yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you.
And we close the meeting at 5:43.
Okay, the meeting will now come to order. Notice this regular city council meeting agenda, notice is hereby given that the above called meeting of the governing body of the City of Balcony Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas, 78201, to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We're going to call in order and recording of a quorum, which we do have, and we're going to do the invocation pledges of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags. Who would like to lead in that? Anybody over here? Yes, if you like, both, do both. Just, you can read right off of there.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to form judgments and make decisions that will affect the lives of those committed to our charge. Please give us the wisdom and understanding, guide our decisions. May they be fair, just, and merciful. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty, freedom, and honor. The Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'll commence into the public comment period, and I'm going to make a chair ruling here that we're going to combine both the public comment period and the items to be discussed on the agenda, all of it combined into one with a three-minute rule for both of those items. So that is going to be my ruling as a chair. We'll move forward with whoever has those items on the agenda that they'd like to come forward to discuss to the governing body. So any item that you have under citizens to be heard, and any items that you have placed on the agenda by specific agenda item, will all be combined into the one presentation under citizens to be heard with a three-minute rule that will be timed by our city administrator. So those that want to come forward, please present yourself to the podium, and you will abide by the rules that we just set forth. I just did.
Lamar Gillian?
Lamar Gillian, 324 Glen Arm, Balcony Heights, Texas. I find your ruling, sir, to be very limiting to the citizens of Balcony Heights. I don't agree with three minutes for what I had four items for. When we first, when this mayor first took over, he wanted to give people extra time. He wanted to have council members say, I would like to give Mr. Gillian another three minutes, make a motion. Evidently, he doesn't like what he's hearing from the citizens. He doesn't like looking at me either when I'm talking. Thank you, sir. The one thing I wanted to be heard about, under citizens to be heard, was the condition of our city. Our code compliance is failing. Place looks terrible. We got grass growing two feet high, we've got a lot of graffiti that's not being taken down. We have rules and regulations about graffiti being taken down. For instance, a business has 10 days to take it down, or they get another call. I see graffiti up behind the old Great East Barbecue that's been up for like three weeks. What's being done about it? In final closing, Mayor, I think your egregious activity tonight to keep us from speaking is a terrible thing to do to the citizens of Balcony Heights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillian. Next.
Miguel Valverde.
Thank you. I'm surprised, not surprised, but I find it, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. Anyway, I'll be talking about what Lamar was talking, as far as code violations and stuff. So, Mayor and Council, my comments probably won't have any impact on any one of you, but as a concerned citizen and property owner, I am compelled to express my opinion and present my concern to the council. With all due respect, please understand that I'm not here to tell you how to do your job, but according to the mayor and council members handbook provided by TML, one of the council members' responsibilities is being a regulator, and the council exercises regulatory powers over the conduct and property of citizens. At the last council meeting, there was a discussion about graffiti and maintenance of the city's streets and sidewalks, which was brought up by a concerned citizen. I heard a council member requesting a copy of the code ordinance in the future to get a better understanding of what the discussion is about. My question is, how can anyone be a regulator if you don't familiarize yourself with the city laws and code ordinances on the city's website prior to the meeting? In the last 12 months, I have noticed a huge increase in code violations, such as unauthorized oversized commercial vehicles parked on the streets, excessive vehicles parked on both sides of the street causing a traffic hazard, public nuisance violations, graffiti, and business properties not being kept up. If there is any interest in any one of you, I recommend the council members revise the following code ordinance, court ordinances, which are provided in the city's website. It's 95.04, properties must be free of public nuisance. 95.08, authority to immediately abate dangerous tall vegetation. And 71.01, oversized vehicles prohibited parking. After look, after reading these ordinances, just ask yourselves, are these code violations good for attracting developers? Do they maintain property values? If you enforce these codes, it would support the goals and statements that you provided newsletters and campaign flyers about needing a change in partnership and leadership to improve, beautify the city and attract developers. This could possibly lower the tax property rate, which many residents have complained about and blamed the former leadership. The goal should be to work together and keep our community safe, clean, and help our community prevail regardless of all obstructions or personal feelings. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for the opportunity to let me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Valverde.
Thank you, sir.
Juan LaSaya?
Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I find it very difficult to accept that as citizens were being limited by members of the council, Mr. Burton, Mr. Sellers, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Eversol, and Ms. Weaver. You guys are the ones that control the city. You've given up all your power and authority to one person. I beg you, I ask you, I urge you to read the codes and understand how they work. It is obvious, in my opinion, that you guys are being totally manipulated and being told what to do. It's in very transparent, transactions are happening that are not being vetted. You guys are being asked to make vote on decisions without giving proper documentation, without giving supporting documentation. You five are the ones that run the city. You've given up your power. I ask you to read, understand your responsibilities, and know what you're supposed to do. You're not followers. I believe some of you were elected because people thought you were leaders. I don't think anybody elected you because they thought you were followers. So I implore you, I ask you, do your research, ask questions, don't say yes to everything. I am very surprised that we have a new city administrator. How many applications did you guys review? If anybody would answer, please. How many applicants were interviewed? Who made the selection? Or again, were you asked or directed to vote for one person? Remember, you guys are representing me, you're representing all the citizens. Represent us. Don't fall and follow just one lead. You are representing us, the citizens. Thank you, and I'll take my time for the next item.
Anybody else we have?
There are no, no one else has signed up.
All right. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Okay, so now let's move on to the meeting. Do we have any presentations from anyone? None? Okay. So then we will now move on to the consent agenda items. The first one that we will look at is financial report for the month 2025. Anybody have any questions regarding those consent agenda items, if you reviewed them?
I have a question about the paid invoice report. Is this time for that?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead. You have the floor.
Mr. Messick, so I know I missed the last meeting, but?
And welcome back.
The previous meeting, yes, sir. I remember we had talked about, we had bought a police vehicle at that time.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Burton had said, you slipped one by me, and you had said that it was in the budget, and then I'm looking at this invoice, and it looks like we purchased another Chevy Silverado on May 6th, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And so I doubt, I mean, my thoughts were that we're going to put that on hold. No?
Yeah, no, sir. So the purchase of a new Silverado has actually been approved by council the past three budget cycles. But what happened is that when Mr. Laura was here and he was over community development, after it was passed the first time, he said, no, hold off, we'll keep it running another year. And it was passed again the year after, and Ms. Rose, through, you know, her benefit, she said, no, we can keep it running again this year. Last year, it was approved by you guys in the budget, again, for $75,000. And I asked her, hey, when you going to buy the truck? We're going to try to keep it running. But then it became obvious that a 20-year-old truck is not going to run forever, and so we pulled the trailer on a new one. So yes, it has been budgeted, it was budgeted for $75,000. We went with the police, Mr. Timmons, as he is very familiar with Caldwell County, and they're on the byboard. We actually got a 2024 model with no mileage on it for less than 45, around 45,000, so the final total was around 48. So we saved the city 25,000 in the process, but yes, sir, it's been budgeted for, for the past three years. I do not recall anybody saying freeze capital purchases. I don't recall a vote on that, but?
Then I have another question. I've heard from a couple of different people that we had two police cruisers motors go out this month, is that correct?
I would defer that to the police chief, but I do say that these vehicles, they're also on a recurring replacement schedule. We bought one this year, next year it'll be back to two, and so when you're maintaining a fleet of nine, you have to go two, 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 one, whatever. And so on upcoming budget cycle, there'll be another two vehicles on the capital, for capital consideration as well. And so that way, because usually by the time we replace them, they've got about 300,000 to 400,000 engine miles on them, and they're starting to crap out, so regardless of what the odometer says, so.
What's the details on those two that blew out? I heard rumors that one of the officers was driving over 100 miles an hour when it went out. Is that, is there any truth to that?
Sir, I would defer that to the acting police chief.
That's not a budget question. We have to stick to the financial aspects of it.
Okay, all right. All right, well, then I'll go to my next budget item.
Yes, sir.
So also, I remember there was a question with Juan LaSaya's reimbursement from a meeting that he went to, and I think the total was 900 and change, but then I see on this month, a second reimbursement for another $721. What is that for?
Just because we like him, sir, and we just decided to give him more. No. He went to two seminars or training sessions with the mayor, but I think what happened is the city card got stuck to the mayor's only, to his bill, so the mayor, we paid for the mayor's on the city credit card, but it refused to pay, to pick up his, and so he ended up paying it out of pocket. And so we're just, he just finally got his travel voucher in for the last one, and that's what that is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just for the record, I went individually. Mr. LaSaya went on his own, we weren't together at all.
Well, you were at?
Yeah, we were at the same.
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify that. Any other questions from council? So I do have a couple of, just real quick ones. The sewer line at 2910 Hillcrest, there was an expense for $9,025. What, is that an apartment complex, or is that the line that runs next to it?
I believe so, but I would defer to Ms. Anderson.
Whatever department can answer that?
Yes, sir.
That is, that was the city's main line in front of 2810, 2910 Hillcrest, which is a brighter day business there.
Which is what now, I'm sorry?
It's a brighter day is the name of the business.
Barter Day?
A brighter day.
A broader day, okay.
A brighter, like bright light.
A brighter, got it. A brighter day. And it was on our side, correct?
Yes, sir.
Did we determine what the problem was that caused that $9,000 expense? Did they put something in the line that clogged it up, or what was the details on it?
Yes. It was a? Yes, it was a broken line, a broken pipe.
Okay. So it was within our infrastructure?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then we had another one at 4502 Fredericksburg Road. Can you tell me that, where that was at?
That was the Whataburger.
Oh, I remember that. That was a recurring problem, right?
Yes, sir.
And then we finally addressed it to the tune of 1609? Again, it was on our side?
Yes, mayor.
So have we had an assessment of what our sewer lines, the current? Because we own them, obviously. The city owns our own infrastructure. One of the few things we own in the form of utilities and services. What is, have we determined the current state of our infrastructure?
It's pretty old. It's of clay, so a lot of the areas are crumbling. So I know that there's a, if not already, a lot of breaks that we just haven't been notified of them. But when they went into, they went on Hillcrest, they were able to see that it's, it's pretty, yeah.
You haven't been with us too long, but maybe Mr. Messick can answer this question. How often has this been occurring for the last, say, four years, three, four years?
Over the last year is when we've seen upticks and problems over at the Whataburger. And like Ms. Anderson said...
Infrastructure, you know, the actual...
Yeah, the city side. And so this stuff's over 50 years old. And so we know that more repairs are coming. And so one of the items was actually in this year's budget, I believe was for a survey of the sewer system and the sewer fund. And so, and that's definitely something we should undertake because it's only going to get worse. And this stuff is very costly, as you can see.
I think our budget, we've always had a healthy budget in the sewer from past years that I can remember.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm getting at is at what point do we start budgeting even more for the eventual reconstruction of our infrastructure?
This year.
It's going to get cost prohibitive.
Yes, sir.
And we're just going to keep throwing money out just for...
Yeah, and a fund balance of $600,000, that sounds like a lot. But when you're doing this kind of work, that can be gobbled up real easily. So this year in the budget, what was authorized is a transfer out of the sewer fund into the capital fund to help pay for Hillcrest costs that are coming up, the sewer component of it. And so what we've done is we've halted that, that transfer out. That'll give you another $300,000, and next year we'll do the same thing. They're trying to get that up to a healthy million or more because these repairs are going to be expensive.
Then one last, a couple more things, but real quick. The billboards, where we're getting revenue, I think $10,000 or somewhere in that area. What are the locations and the contracts? As I remember, back in 2009, I negotiated one for $10,000. And it was brothers, a couple of brothers that came to us. They have that sign company that's on Hildebrand and I-10. And they had, they were just starting their company. They came to us and we actually took a picture with the $10,000 check. And it's the billboard that's right there where the Office Depot is at, or the office where the hospital is at, that billboard there. Is that the one we have where we're collecting?
We have two, like you said, yes, sir. And one of them, now we get $14,000 a year for one of them. And the second one is seven, but I don't, I couldn't tell you where that is.
That's all we have is just two?
Yes, sir.
Getting franchise fees out of?
Yes, sir.
And we have done an inventory to make sure we've got our signs covered that we're supposed to be receiving revenue on it.
I know of no new signs that have gone up, but I would say yes, unless I get notified of it.
And I don't know, I don't think this is relevant because it's not on the agenda. Counselor on the crime control, not on the agenda, right? Okay, so skip that. We're ready to move forward. Yes?
The quarterly payment on the, oh, it jumped again. I'm using my phone as a computer tonight. On, I think it's on the last, last page of the checks. The WODA quarterly payment?
Yes, sir.
$98,000, is that correct?
Yeah, we make about $100,000 every quarter. Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? So the other thing is just real quick on the impound fees, and this may be a question for our police department. Under section 10, 370, 022, our budget states that in 2025, we're going to be anticipating 60K coming in roughly. And in '24, it was 80K, so there's a $20,000 difference there. And then under 370, 023, it shows that the impound auction fees also are going to go down from 70K anticipated from 80K the year below. Okay? So I do have some questions that I think I'll bring up later where it's more relevant. But in that fund, I guess traditionally because of the fact that it goes up and down?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're looking at basically?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions? Do we have a motion on the floor?
In, in the pipeline, what other vehicles do you anticipate this coming year?
I would defer to the...
I think we addressed that, Frank. Is that relevant to...
All we're discussing is approval of the finance report for the month, so we can't go into detail for...
So new business, maybe you can bring it up, Councilman Burton? Mayor Protemp? Okay, so, so right now we're entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the floor from any council member that would like to move that motion?
I'll move.
Okay, Councilman Burton, Mayor Protemp has made the motion. We have a second to that motion. Yeah, it's a consent agenda item. It has to be approved. Okay, Councilman Sellers has seconded that motion. Now let's go ahead and call for the vote. Ms. Weaver? Yea or nay on the consent agenda to approve it? Okay, Mr. Eversol? Also approved, Councilman Jimmy?
Yay.
Okay, Councilman Sellers, yea. Mr. Burton?
Yay.
Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote on the consent. All right, now let's move over to the business items. Discussion and possible action to approve a contract with Spirit of Halloween to lease space B-61 at WODA. Mr. Enriquez? You have the floor, sir. Item number one on the business items.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, this next item is a discussion of possible action on a lease agreement with Spirit Halloween for space B-61 at Wonderland of the Americas. This is obviously part of your, the effort on the part of the city to generate revenue and activate this vacant retail space. The lease terms remain consistent with last year's agreement, but the rental amount has increased from $48,005 to $53,000 and almost 10% increase. This reflects increased operating cost and strong demand for temporary seasonal use of the space. We recommend approval and open to any questions you may have.
So let's entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, and then we can have discussion after the second. So we have the first by Councilman Hernandez. We have a second to that.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Now let's go ahead and discuss. Open it up for discussion. Any council members? Councilman Burton?
Yeah, I think last year it was around 48, 45 to 48,000, like the city administrator alluded to. But I don't know if we, if we paid the utilities on that last year. I think they, I think they paid the utilities last year.
The agreement is exactly as it was the previous year.
So we paid the utilities last year, then?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from any council member on that? Yes, sir, Councilman Sellers?
What's the term of the lease?
So they're authorized to enter, they have a right of entry as of July 1st. They've expressed an interest to move in July 15th, and they'll move out of the premises by November 14th.
Any other questions by anyone? So when we were contacted by Spirit of Halloween, and I was consulted with our city administrator, Mr. Enriquez, we both agreed that the market rate in which we had previously been leasing was not accounting for cost of living increases and a bunch of other things and the economy. And we felt that the rate that we negotiated, or Mr. Enriquez did, was going to bring in a difference of money from the 48, 5 to 53. So we've increased revenue for the city by doing that. And just wanted to report that positive note for our community. Any other questions? So then let's go ahead and entertain a motion. We've got one from Councilman Hernandez, second by Councilman Burton. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Councilman Burton? Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yay.
Councilman Eversol?
Approved.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Yay.
Yay. So we have a 5-0 vote as well. Motion carries no nays. Okay. So now we move on to item number two. Discussion and possible action to approve a contract with Moonycap Inc. to provide administrative services related to the city's TIRZ. Mr. Administrator Enriquez?
Yes, Mayor and council. Agenda item number two is a discussion of possible action to approve a contract with Moonycap for administrative services related to the city's tax increment reinvestment zone, ORTERS. This item continues the work that you previously authorized back in your council meeting on March the 24th, when the city directed the prior city administrator to take first steps towards the creation of this ORTERS around the Wonderland of the Americas. Moonycap is a nationally recognized firm that specializes in the financial administrative management of special districts. They will assist us not just with the initial work of creating the ORTERS, but also compliance, reporting, and even some long-term financial modeling to ensure that this ORTERS is positioned for success. And we, our staff recommends approval. And if there are any questions?
Any questions by council? But first, let's go ahead and, let's take the vote so we can go ahead and open it up for discussion. I'm sorry. So let's go ahead and open up the table for voting. So we have a vote on the motion to accept or approve a contract with Minicap.
I think it's, I think it's premature to vote. We should discuss it first.
Well, you have to, you have to take a vote first. The rules require. Now we can go ahead and open it up?
No, there's a motion, second, then there's discussion, then you call for the vote.
That's correct. That's what I'm doing. So I'm calling for somebody to put a motion on the floor to vote for it. Then we have a second, then we'll open it up for discussion. And at that point, you can amend, you can make a motion that you don't accept it as written. You can modify it, do whatever you like at that point, at that point. So it's not itched in ink, so to speak. It's subject to modification from any council member. But you have to vote in order to open it up for discussion. So do we have a motion on the floor from any council member to open it up for a second, and then we discuss? And amend, approve, disapprove, whatever you wish to do at that time. This is the way the process works in the actual parliamentary procedures.
Is this what we discussed last meeting?
This has a, no. That would be, if you're referring to the joint EDC meeting, that is the next agenda item. The ORTERS has its roots in the meeting from March the 24th of this year, where council instructed then City Administrator Andy Jocelyn to explore the possibility of the creation of a ORTERS. As part of that recommendation, Mr. Jocelyn identified these, Moonycap in consultation with Clay Benford, who is, who is, I think, also EDC, sits as counsel for EDC. This was his recommendation. And, and these are the folks that came forward to assist us in the creation of the tax increment reinvestment zone. I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Eversol.
Basically, it's a procedural to continue in the formation of TIRZ. It has been approved by council to move forward on. Not instructions for a professional to be considered. Clay Benford, our attorney from EDC, recommended, highly recommended this entity. And so now it's being brought before you to go ahead and execute an agreement with Minice, Minice, yeah, Minicap as the recommended professional firm. Councilman Burton? First, before we talk, let's go ahead and take a vote on it so we can have a discussion. So I just wanted to give you a little explanation. So I need a vote from a council member, and then a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion. At that point, you can make a decision, amend, do whatever else you need to do after that. Yeah, a motion, excuse me. We need a motion. So please explain it to them so they can get a better understanding. I may have confused them.
So in the strictest sense of parliamentary procedure under Roberts rules, a motion and second is needed to open up a matter for discussion. Then there's a motion, second, the matter's discussed. Then a motion and second will be done to formally either adopt or not to adopt the item. Now, I will tell you, this is new for Balcony sites and very few cities do it the formal procurement process. But the mayor's correct. Under the formal Roberts rules of order, in order to even open up discussion on any item, you should have a motion and second to open up the matter for discussion.
I have a statement to make.
Well, first, we need to make sure...
I understand, I understand. But I, I believe the reason we don't have a motion is because Mr. Enrique needs to go into more elaborated detail as to what this is. I don't think we quite understand everything.
That would be correct on my part, yes.
If he would explain it a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Perhaps we could understand to make a motion.
Got you. So a tax increment reinvestment zone is a financing tool. What ends up happening is you identify parcels, an area, a very specific geographic area. In this case, this is why we hire Moonycap. They will assist us in sort of, we can have ideas, but the general concept or the idea is that the Wonderland of the Americas and some of the properties adjacent to it would become a part of this tax increment reinvestment zone. What ends up happening is you create a baseline of value on that property at that time. I'm just going to make it up, $100 million, let's say. So at that point, and Frank is very well, so Frank, if I say anything that's completely off the rails, please feel free to interject. Let's say it's a baseline of $100 million. The incremental value that the property goes up goes into what's now called a TIF, tax increment financing. And that money gets reinvested into the ORTERS. Okay? And so it is recommended, it's been recommended. I believe that city council, and again, you're right, Mr. Sellers, there's a lot of new folks, so it probably did need to be addressed in a more holistic way. But the idea behind it is that this, the creation of this zone is how you can sustain economic development around these very specific, very discrete areas. We, well, nothing's been set in stone at this point about what that area is. The discussion has always been around the area immediately adjacent to Wonderland of the Americas. So if you want to think about it, maybe Fredericksburg, down Fredericksburg Road, and then back up Balcony's Drive, out to the, maybe to I-10, and then I-10 and 410 being the border. That would be the initial sort of idea. But these things have to be worked out, and these are very specialized financing tools. And what I'm giving you is the sort of Reader's Digest version of it. And I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't dare to, to tell you, you know, that that's the whole thing. But this is why we need, or I think what it creates, the need for experts like Moonycap to assist us in the creation and the development, implementation of this zone, right? And so the idea is principally, it's an economic development infrastructure tool that's used in order to create specific funding in order to reinvest in a very specific part of Balcony's Heights. The truth is, is that probably in Olive Bear County, there might be... The truth is, is that probably in Olive Bear County, there might be, I don't know, less than twenty TERZ zones or some number like that. That might be off, I don't know. How many, Frank? I mean, I don't know.
The city of San Antonio by themselves have created forty-two TERZ zones.
Okay, initiated, okay. So they're, they're, they're bigger than that, right? There's many TERZ zones. But the idea is that those communities that have created them are interested in, in, in creating a, a mechanism by which they can continuously have money earmarked to be able to reinvest in a very discrete area. So that's essentially what Munich Cap will assist us in doing, is figuring out how big should that area be? What are the projections, the benchmarks? And what realistically can be counted on as, you know, increasing in value? And the idea behind it is to capture, you know, the, the increased value in, in these properties that are adjacent to all the work that you're doing or plan on doing around Wonderland of the Americas.
And it falls basically under the land use essentials. And the governing agency that oversees this is this Texas Comptroller's Office. And if you've ever heard terms like what I utilized back in two thousand to help Target come in, the heart of hospital, and some of these other things that I learned in my economic development class from A and M, was that you have like empowerment zones, TERZ zones, tax increment finance zones. These are all tools that the state of Texas has given us to be able to utilize, to be able to attract and manage when we have investors coming into our communities. And it captures the revenue and freezes that amount to the amount of the valued property to where later you utilize that money. For example, if you want to use an abatement, you want to give some form of incentive to a developer that comes in, that money's captured and put away. It doesn't cost the city any money other than the cost to organize it like we're doing now. And that is part of the stipulated regulations that the comptroller requires us to do. There is a very strict guideline process that you have to go through. This is one of those processes.
There, there is, and Floyd reminded me of this, is of course, there's opportunities to leverage these resources with other resources. So for example, if this would all go through the county, right? Or it, it, we could leverage these resources with other outside entities like the county via, or any, any one of a number of other entities, right? And the infrastructure that would go in wouldn't, since the, the property in, in theory is, 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 is sort of sustaining itself, you're not asking homeowners or, or those, you know, that tax base to, to, to pay for things that are directly going to benefit those particular property owners there. So it also, it, it, there's a, there's an aspect of it, not only to leverage those resources from other outside resources, but it also affords you the opportunity to sort of tell your constituents that, you know, and this is around very much the discussion that you hear with San Antonio and whatnot, that this is a taxpayer fund because it's coming from these specific zones and things like that. And, and so it's, it's an opportunity to also assuage concerns that their, their tax money from their property is used to fund something that, you know, they, they maybe will not directly benefit from, but the city benefits from in increased values, et cetera, sales tax and all the other things that come with it. So it's also a, a mechanism by which to bring in and attract additional money.
Thank you for the explanation. For me, I, I was familiar with the TERZ and the process, but I wasn't familiar with this Munich Cap. But I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve it so that we can discuss Munich Cap, the cost of the contract, and so forth and so forth.
Got it.
We have a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, so now let's open it up for more discussion. Mr. Messer?
Again, I forgot this other part, is it self-funding as well? So it comes from the TERZ. The TERZ funding is what funds, there has to be money in there in order to be able to, to pay for all that.
Yep, can I, I can add, Mayor?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
There are two ways for TERZ to be created. One is a developer with a project comes forward to the city, says, here's the property I would like to be included in a TERZ, and the city creates that TERZ. If, the other way is for a city-initiated TERZ. And because in most instances, when the developer does it, they're the ones that put together the project plan, the finance plan, all the materials needed, as the mayor pointed out, that are required by law to move forward. Since this would not be a developer-created TERZ, but a city-initiated, my understanding is Munich Cap would assist in developing all the required documentation, identifying the area needed for the TERZ to create this TERZ. Now, per the agreement, the majority of the fees will come from any monies that are, go into the TERZ. So in other words, there has to be development for that money to get in there. Now, the contract does state that for the initial development of the TERZ, they estimate that the annual, that the estimated cost would be between ten thousand to fifteen thousand, plus an estimate of five thousand for one-time initial setup costs to start everything going. So what the city would be subject or liable to is that the most from this agreement is twenty thousand. After that, all the other fees that would come from here would be coming from the TERZ that's created. So if no development ever goes in there, they're gonna get no additional fees. That's their incentive to go help make sure the development goes in there. So they'll get those other fees. But under this agreement, the way it's placed is up to twenty thousand at most to do all the work to create, develop, come up with the initial project plan, finance plan, develop what, what the geographic area of the TERZ will be, all the requirements of it. They also identify that they'll go talk to the county to see the county to be part of the TERZ and other entities that can be part of, participate. So that's, the bottom line is, you don't have a developer coming to build a TERZ. The city would be creating it, but you're hiring this party to help you create this TERZ.
And how much are those other fees once, like, are they getting a percentage or how's that work?
It's not set on a percentage, it's a set amount every year. For example, not to exceed fifteen thousand annual fee for, for, to keep the updated TERZ feasibility study. There's a, not to exceed twenty thousand for amendments of the TERZ plan that might be required. And then there's another, the final one is an additional twenty thousand not to exceed, related to issuing TERZ-related bonds. So, but again, those last three that I mentioned are all if the TERZ has funds. And I added language to the contract that no fees from these three can come out of the city's general fund. It has to come from any created TERZ fund.
I have yet to hear how we're gonna get our twenty thousand dollars back.
That's the investment the city's making to create this TERZ.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna benefit from that. Quite naturally.
Well, if the TERZ is created and there's development that goes into the TERZ, that, that, that increases the tax increment, there's that increment that could come back to the city to assist in adding more and would come to the city.
That's what I want to hear.
Yes, sir. If, if there's development in the TERZ that's created, that increment will come back to the city. Or since it's not a developer-created one, there's no, no developer to give the money to, it comes to the city to help enrich that district.
I have a question. I know you said that Clay Benford was the one who recommended Munich Cap. You know, who, who vets them or, you know, do, do we have any knowledge of them? Is this their expertise? They're just getting started, they've been around a long time?
It's, it's a national company that, that does, this is what they do for a living, essentially. I mean, we, I'm sure that, I know Floyd's been in touch with Ms. Sloan directly, but, who's been our liaison thus far throughout the, the entire discussion. But it's just perusing their website and looking at other projects that they've done. They're, they're clearly, you know, very experienced in this field.
Question, okay, I, we're talking about the expenses, but I didn't see a path to profitability. Like it's been said, if all we're throwing out is, is fifteen thousand a year and twenty thousand down, where's, how, how long is it gonna take before we get into a profitable situation? Or unless we're just throwing money into a hole and, and seeing how long it's gonna last till we get profitable? I mean, I don't want to have another deal that we kind of got going on right now.
So may I reply? Can I reply to?
Yes.
Okay. So to understand, this is not a money-making endeavor. This is an investment in a tool for the city to utilize to when you start developing properties within our city. Right now, we don't have anything in place that would attract an investor to come in to invest in a potential piece of property that we have. So what the state has done is created these type of funds that enable and assist cities in attracting investors. Because investors look at what does it behoove us to bring our business into this community? Aside from your abatements, in which we have an abatement policy we recently passed, that's all we have. The TERZ gives us additional monies coming from the tax base of the investments that are gonna be brought in for the investment portfolios they bring to our city. For example, we could have used it possibly at the business park when it was built over there off I-ten. Because then that money would have been taxed at its fixed value, correct? Fixed value, and then that gets set aside into a fund, okay? And it accumulates interest in accumulating funds. You have another one that comes in. And these are the funds that you utilize to attract these businesses and offset whatever they may have as a cost. Hey, we need development fees reduced of, say, there's a hundred thousand dollars in development fees. Well, you can reduce them to fifty, potentially utilizing some of those funds from the TERZ, correct? That can be used to offset that. So it's an incentive program utilized to facilitate a better business transaction with businesses to have them come in for our business in our community. Go ahead, Mr. Enriquez.
Yeah, I, I'm just, one of the things that, you know, the, one, I think you have to take a step back and say, well, why hasn't the investment come? You know, we have this mall, we have, I think part of that is this, there's not a comprehensive sort of strategy around how to attract investment. And you are, in fact, the entire city of Balcony's Heights is what HUD calls a difficult development area. And what that means is that due to low income and, you know, some other challenges, right? It's gonna be very difficult to attract the investment necessary to create the sort of transformational changes that are necessary. Communities, many of them, have used TERZ as a tool in order to be able to spur reinvestment in a community. Because as most developers will tell you, they'll say, if the deal does not pencil, I can't come here, right? In other words, if there, if there isn't a way for my investment business to make money, I, I'm not, I can't make a go of it. And so the idea behind this is you've already made substantial investment in Wonderland of the Americas. You know, setting that decision aside for a second, that ship has sailed already, that money is, so how are you going to make that area an attractive investment for folks? I mean, it takes a while, I mean, to, you know, to, to do it, sure. But now you're, you know, four or five years in, or since twenty-one, so four years in, and it hasn't come. And so the, the many communities have used the TERZ as a, as a way to create a, a, uh, an, an, an investment or to trigger or to use as a catalyst to create investment in the community. Again, it's something that the county and, and other entities would want to, I think, view upon it favorably, that the city is taking these steps in order to figure out, okay, how do we actually make a go of this?
I, I believe I have.
I think I wanted to say something. Wait, we can, okay.
Yeah. And I, I take more of a common sense approach to this, okay? We've, like you said, we've invested substantially in the base on Wonderland Mall. You're talking about going off on this plan when Lamar said it best, okay? We get rid of the graffiti, we, we, we turn Balcony Heights into what it was in the seventies and eighties. We start edging the sidewalks and we, we put beautification wards up. Investors will come, but with graffiti on our vacant buildings, they're not coming, okay? So I think that we have to address that issue. If, if we have a clean city, the investors will come. I'm not for this at all.
Well, we agree that the investors are not coming. I'm good to, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that we agree on that.
Councilman Burton?
Okay, we were talking in general facts earlier. Very specific places, very specific this and that. On, but from my phone, I can, I can barely read it. But it says adjacent to the Wonderland Mall, so that's a specific spot. What place adjacent to the Wonderland Mall?
Well, again, this is what we need Munich Cap for. We've had discussions about, okay, well, because it, it's a little bit of a tennis match. You, you provide feedback to the consultant, the consultant feeds, gives you feedback, and it goes back and forth. The initial idea around it, at least, you know, because part of the, the nexus of this is also from the, from the EDC, is, you know, it would be, the, the area that has the, at least in the initial stages, the greatest potential is those areas immediately around the Wonderland of the Americas Mall, right? That footprint. And the, the parcels on the other side, you know, following, you know, by where the, 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 the transit center is, up, up the road to where, you know, the Whataburger is, both sides of the road. But again, this isn't, nothing has been decided. If we could make these decisions, it wouldn't be wise for us to make them without the need, without the, the use of a consultant. But, you know, in order to begin the discussions, they want to kind of have an idea of what are we thinking? And that was generally what we were thinking. But again, I think it's best to refrain from any sort of final ideas on what the TERZ zone should be until you get folks who have some experience in creating them. They can give us the pros and cons as to what we're thinking with respect to the map and the actual geographic location of it.
So to start this TERZ, fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, I'm, I'm kind of confused on that. Where, where does that money come from? Because Frank was saying earlier, it's not gonna come out of our general.
No, I think he did say it in the initial stages, it's coming from general fund. But these things have to be watered and maintained and all that. So after, once this TERZ is created, then yes, it becomes sort of self-sustaining because they cannot draw, as Frank pointed out, he said that he changed, modified the contract so that it would, the, the funds only come from the, from the existing TERZ funding. So it's not a draw on the general fund.
So what's our initial, our initial layout? What, how much? Is it twenty thousand dollars?
Up to twenty thousand is what the contract reads.
I don't like the up to part. I'd like.
It could be less.
I understand that, but I would, I would like to be more specific. That's the big I don't know?
Do some more research.
May I?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Enriquez.
So guys, we need, you know, business development, especially on Fredericksburg Road, you know, across the street from the mall. For Mr. Sellers, it was the prior administration that even approved TERS. So I think everybody's on board with, we need to attract developers. And so looking at twenty thousand dollars as a one-time annual expense, that's miniscule compared to how much business we can, you know, attract? New developers, get a facelift as they come in, create new businesses, new opportunity, new tax revenues, new jobs for, for people. So I mean, this is an investment. We don't get a direct return on our money, but indirectly, it's going to be huge. And so, you know, my questions in the beginning were related specifically to the company mid-cap. But you guys have answered that successfully for me. So I would like to make a motion to approve.
Well, we've already made them.
No, that was to have the discussion. Now we're making a motion to take action on the item. So he has the floor, let him finish his motion.
I still have a question.
Okay, we can do that after we take the vote. So we have a motion, Councilman Ananas, do we have a second to that motion? So that we can continue discussion, ask the questions you need to ask, Councilman Burton?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Weaver. Now let's open it up for more discussion. Go ahead, Councilman Burton.
Yes, what's the end game here? I mean, what is our end game if this thing is not producing? What, what, what is, what? When is the time to jump ship on this when we don't see it producing? I mean.
Can you explain to him again the process so that he understands? It's not a matter of producing, it's.
The initial tool, the initial up to twenty thousand dollar investment is to create the TERS.
I understand.
That would then be used to hopefully attract developers to come and develop, to create that increment. If the tool is utilized by developers, it will create that increment where funds will go into the increment to either reimburse a developer for the public improvements they're making or for other expenditures that the city and the TERS board agree to. And that's another thing is the city will eventually appoint a TERS board to, to make recommendations to the council on the use of the TERS funds. There, there's simply a recommending body, the final decision will be the councils. As I mentioned earlier, the city of San Antonio has created some TERS. Some have been very successful, some where there was no investment, no increase in increment, it went nowhere. So while it's really going to be as, like both the administrator and the mayor have mentioned, it's simply a tool to try to attract developers saying, hey, you have a TERS. I can utilize that to help make some public, reimburse me for some of the public improvements. I'm willing to invest in the city on this project I plan to build in the city. So again, it's a tool. As Councilman Sellers said, when are we going to get our money back? It may never come back if no one utilizes the tool. But if people, if developers or property owners or investors want to utilize that tool, the city should re, get that reimbursed to that initial twenty thousand dollars.
And this comes initially out of our general, right?
Yes, sir, it would, and we can afford that. But I, I also want to double back on something that was said earlier. This opens, this really opens the door for other organizations and entities that have much deeper pockets than ours. If, if we can get the county on board, if we can get VIA on board, that's a win-win. And so that's what this would potentially facilitate down the road. Also, this company that we're using, actually, the gentleman that's, that is part of this company is actually from San Antonio. He actually knows Mr. Weiss, he's actually walked the malls, he actually comes and visits. And so he's familiar with what we're going through and, and how that situation is over there. But, but just the potential there for getting the county perhaps and, and VIA in on this, I think that's a good long-term investment.
Question though, but if it's just sitting there, I mean, are we, if, let's just say it's sitting there and doing nothing and no one's interested, do we still, are we still out an annual fee? Are we going to continue to be milled?
Now, the, the way the contract, the way the contract is written, the annual fee must come from the increment budget. So if there's no money in the increment budget, they get.
Okay, we're going to continue to get it for.
And for the sake of everyone, just so you know, the previous council was presented with this information that was here before. Mr. Benford was consulted in a conversation after an EDC meeting. And we asked him, this is the problem we face. This is what, and not kicking a dead dog, we're just rolling them over a little bit. This is where the former administration basically put us at. We're in a very dire, worse than what we initially thought of the five point four million into the mall is. It's a lot worse. And when you look at it, you're, we're losing a thousand dollars, almost eleven hundred dollars a day, a day on the deal that was made by our former administration. We're losing that to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars per every three months. This amount is not an investment to where you get a return back right away. It's an investment for us to be able to have a tool available to attract these investors in the long-term plan that we have. And if you want, you can look this term up. It's called trans-oriented redevelopment. We'll be talking about that later. But in order to do these things, and we have the perfect component to solve the problem from what we're facing right now with our partners in the mall. And that trans-oriented redevelopment is basically functioning off a component that we have, which is VIA. And it's called intergovernmental relationships that we're trying to establish. So we don't have to be funding out of our operating budget to get us out of this mess that we're in, okay? Because what's going to happen is, or what could happen, and we're perilously close to that in the sense that with what has occurred, and we should have done this way before we got into this situation. We're trying to fix it. And this is one of the components that we're utilizing to try to fix this problem that we have. It's a tool that we promised our citizens we were going to do to get us out of this mess. So we have to take an initial small investment, which is miniscule compared to what we're bleeding every day. A thousand to eleven hundred dollars per day, a hundred thousand dollars every three months, and we have no return coming back in. So we have to do something, because I've had at least four investors that I've brought in from different parts of the United States that have been interested in coming in, investing to try and redevelop our city, putting in housing and all kinds of other things. And the, the obstacle they face is the mall is in such severe debt to the tune of twenty million plus that these partners have bled it out. And then we have our five point four million in it. If that side fails and goes bankrupt, you just better write it all off at that point because we're stuck with our loan at five point four and we still have to make that hundred thousand plus. So it is thoroughly and, and fiscally responsible of us to seek alternatives and solutions to solve this problem. But this is one way of doing so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I, I understand the positive side of this.
Right.
Okay. What, if we go forward with this, we still have the graffiti, we have the homeless, we have people sleeping on the curbs. We've got to address that issue if we get forward with this.
I agree, and we're working on that as well. We are working on that component diligently. We're quite aware of it, Ms. Anderson is quite aware of it. Don't think we're not doing anything on that. It's just that we have certain obstacles that we have to get over, and we're doing that. We're creating a task force to be able to attach. That department has now been aggressively working on these apartments, going out there. Our fire chief has been out there. We are working on the problem to get that addressed internally in the city as well as externally. It's unfortunate, but what's been happening is not only our city, it's all over the region that we're experiencing a tremendous amount of homelessness now. Just not to get too far off track, we have a meeting this week with the Barra County, a thing that the last council approved, an MOU. When Andy was here and our council talked about it back then. And it is a understanding that we have with Habitat for Humanity. Is it Habitat for Humanity?
Haven for Hope.
Haven for Hope.
And Barra County.
And it's not to bring them in and relocate them here. It's to find and work with them using our resources such as our police and our fire to identify these problems where homelessness is. And then being able to identify and point it out, then they will come in, get with these people and relocate them to another area. Get them a home, get them a place to stay, get them food, get them clothing, the things that they require. But it removes them out of our city and puts them in another place, possibly one of their homes. Mr. Burton?
One last question. So their budget cycle runs each year, correct? The, the, the first year, we're on the hook for up, I'll use your terms, up to twenty thousand dollars. The second year, we don't have to pay anything because it's, it's going to have to come out of the TERS zone or if it's not there to pay it, it goes away?
There'll be no money owed any year past the first year if there's no TERS funds to pay it. They might still be doing work, but they're not being paid because the contract is clear that those annual fees will come from the TERS fund.
Thank you.
That's going to be their incentive to get the people in, to bring the people in, to get the people going, to motivate everybody to where that will have a, a balance, and then we will be fine. I mean, Balcony is I-ten, four-ten. I mean, I've been here for seventy-one years and we've really grown, okay? But we're, we're not growing in the right way, okay? We're sort of stagnant right now, and we've had things happen to us in the past years that have, have influenced our standing right now. And right now, we have to do, take some serious steps and chances so that we can get it going. If we don't take a chance, how are we going to get better? You know, we gotta, we gotta do the initiative. We gotta get a, get up there and, and put, you know, tighten our belts and let's, let's do it. And we have our own problems here, the graffiti, the homeless, we'll take care of that. That's us. But these people are going to help us bring more people in, better, you know, higher paying job. I mean, it's just, you have to start somewhere. And we might as well start there. And, and if they're going to give us help and it's just only that twenty thousand dollars one time, let's get the help. I mean, they want to get paid, they're going to have to bring it in. That, that tells you right there. And then we're going to get, we're going to benefit from it. I mean, it may not seem like that, but in the long run, it is, if you really think about it. So.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Do you have any other, any other comments? You yield the floor. Mr. Burton, did you want to be recognized? Okay, Mr. Eversol. I think we beat it pretty much over the head, this issue. I think if everybody's ready to vote, unless you feel that you need to have a few more comments, I'm willing to allow that so that we can, everybody feels comfortable having their questions answered. All right, let's go ahead and entertain the vote. Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers? And Councilman Ananas?
Yay.
Councilman Eversol?
Approve.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Councilman.
Yes.
We have a four-one, a four-o vote.
Four-one.
Negative, four-one negative and four positive. So motion carries. Thank you very much for everyone, your time and your comments. Thanks. Discussion number three, discussion and possible action to approve a contract with P-three markets to provide public-private investment services. Councilman, how should we go ahead and proceed? You go ahead and would go with the parliamentary procedure and, or just move? I don't mind, either way, it's just, I've been asked and recommended by citizens, do it this way, do it that way. I'm trying to stick to a certain regime of doing stuff. However, we can flow through this today, I'm all for it.
My recommendation is to have the city administrator outline this contract and then council and make a motion in second and then discussion and then the vote.
All right, that sounds good. Mr. Enriquez, floor ahead.
Yes, so agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on a contract with P-three markets to provide public-private investment services. The agreement will allow the city to partner with P-three on identifying redevelopment opportunities, attracting investment around the Wonderland of Americas. Notably, the contract includes the services of Roger Steiger, fellow of the Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors, a highest designation for real estate valuation. He will conduct a valuation and comprehensive assessment of the Wonderland property that covers the periods from twenty-one to now. This is a key in aligning a redevelopment strategy with best practices, professional investment standards, and we recommend, I, staff recommends approval. Are there any questions? And, and I can, you know, probably this, now that I'm getting a sense of, let me provide some background if I might. On previous CDC meetings, we were informed of, of the, 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 the position of, of the mall with, with the challenges and whatnot. And so one of the things that we reached a consensus on is to have a joint meeting. Because as you know, mayor and council, the EDC really doesn't have a fund per se to fund studies, investments, et cetera. Essentially, it exists to, you know, the, the only thing in its portfolio, if you want to call it a portfolio, is Wonderland of the Americas Mall and the investment there. And so we knew, the EDC realizing that, basically, unless we got the approval of city council, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense to move forward with anything. So we, we asked and we were granted the opportunity to have a joint meeting on June the 12th. So both council and the EDC was here. And at that moment, at that point, they heard from the Juan Saldaña, the principal of P-three around the explanation of why this assessment, this comprehensive strategic assessment was necessary. Primarily to see where the city stood from a financial standpoint and with respect to the, the mall. It's my understanding, and again, there are others here that have been involved in this transaction longer, probably since its inception, but there'd never really been an audit per se done, that never really have had, you know, a, a, a moment where they had the opportunity to really look underneath the hood. And, and while this assessment covers primarily the financial and operational audit, one of the things that we could look at down the way is if, you know, again, not, that's not part of this, but actually even looking at the physical structure itself. But, which was a recommendation. But again, we're not, that's, that's not covered here. It's financial and operational, and in your packet, you'll see all the documents that they'll be reviewing, which is very comprehensive in order to get a true measure of the, of the, the value of your investment at this point. Moreover, it'll give you an opportunity to begin to identify and get some clarity around the highest and best use for the mall. Which is, I think, something that not just the EDC, but in, in, in my interactions with the city council has been something that, has been a prime interest to see what would be the highest and best use for that property from a, a standpoint of, of the biggest shareholder, which is the EDC and by association, the city of Balcony Heights. And so that's, that's, that's what this agreement is. There's a, in anticipation of a favorable outcome on this vote, we've already begun the discussions with the management of Crossroads Limited. They've assured us that they would provide all the documents that are on that list. They've assured us that they would provide all the documents that are on that list. There is, you know, some questions about confidentiality and all that. Frank has been very helpful in assisting with how, you know, how we potentially assuage those concerns. But they've given us a date of June 30th of them having collected all those documents so that the, the, the assessment can, can begin.
Any discussions? Frank, you said open it up for the vote now? Not votes, excuse me, open it up.
For the, motion second, then discussion.
Okay, we have a motion entertained by any council member and then we'll second.
Is it your motion?
No, if you'd like to make the motion, go right ahead.
I made a motion that we accept this.
Okay, move forward, okay. Ms. Weaver, second. Okay, now let's open up for discussion. Any further discussion, Mr. Burden?
Okay. Where would the 49.5 come from, general?
That's a possibility, we can, we can put it there as well. But it also could come from the EDC fund. The fund balance in EDC, although it has no cash, is relatively high, right? Because it's around $4 million. It keeps coming down every year, but you could fund it through there. Now, the cash is going to come through the general fund anyway regardless. But it could go either, you could put it under professional services in the general fund. We, we are seeing significant savings this year for a couple of reasons. Transferring money out of the red light camera, for one, that netted us another $70,000. And also the payroll savings that we're seeing this year due to turnover, so.
So this, this is our forensic audit of, of the mall to find out where monies have gone, where, where they've kind of disappeared, if you will.
It's that and, and, and one step beyond as well. Because it also will provide some, not just to the finances, but operationally, there's looking at how the mall is operating and salaries and jobs and that kind of thing. And then also the potential to begin the discussion around what are the highest and best uses for the mall? In other words, what could, what could go there and where could it go?
So this is way outside my scope. Do we have any comparative other companies to, to, you know, bounce this? I mean, just, just to see if we're, I, I don't know how to ask this without saying, sounding cheap, but you know, shopping around for, I'm sure this is a, because I saw the presentation the gentleman gave out of Chicago and it was, it was impressive, but is, is this the, the best one to go with or, you know, shouldn't, should we not shop around a little bit? Or what do you call it, a bidding process or?
I think time is of the essence. I mean, you know, you want to shop around, it's going to take forever. I mean, nobody can make up their mind, you know, like that. We have good references, we have excellent, you know, examples. We've got people who care. Now, that's, that's one of the things that, that I like to look at. If they're, they care enough to help us, you know, sure, they're going to have to charge us, but they care enough, you know, they come, they come forward, they show you what they have, they have to offer. You know, they, they give you all the points that you need to know about. You know, like, we don't know what's going on to the mall for the last four years. The escalators still don't work, you know, I mean, where's all the money that we've invested or he's supposed to have invested or he said he invested? Where does it go? And I, I just don't understand that. And these people are going to bring everything into the open and they're going to let us know one way or the other who got boozled. So, you know, I'm just sorry, it's, it's just, that's the way it is. It hasn't, it wasn't taken care of properly when it was started. And it, and, and things just compounded and compounded and, and built up. And now, you know, if we don't address it now, who knows what's going to happen here?
So.
As a, if I could add just one thing to, because just to be, as to your question specifically about price and all that. If you recall, and this is mostly in EDC, but I think it may have filtered into a little bit of city council as well. There was a movement at one point to just get a valuation from a third party at one point. And which is really more not at all what this is, like this is that plus much more. And you were getting, I think, quotes of $30,000 just, just to just get an appraisal, if you want to call it that. So, you know, if you compare it to what you were looking at for that and this, I think it's, it's just really, this is much, I think, more responsive to the actual needs of the, not just the EDC, but again, by association, the city council to, to get a grasp on the problem, right? Like just to really understand what, where are the, where is the, 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 the real challenges here? And how do we, how can we begin to get around them?
I think too is if, since we just approved TARS, I think TARS in combination with this would also be like not just looking at the problems and trying to lay out and go, oh, look, this is what's going on. It's also looking at what's going on and look what we can do. I think that was the intent of the mall. I think, I think it, I think it's a goldmine in a lot of ways too. And I think, I think we just got to look at it, analyze it. I mean, it's a $5 million project for art, for our city. And I think, I mean, I'm not used to dealing, wheeling and dealing $5 million. I don't have $5 million in my bank, but I do know this, that it needs, we need professionals involved in it to make decisions. And like if, if TARS brings in new developers that are going to transform this into a negative into a positive or show us the pathway to a positive, then I'm, I think I'm up for it. I didn't say that, I'm just saying.
Thank you, Councilman Ebersol. Anybody want to?
Yeah, be recognized.
Yes, please, sir.
So Roger, what is, is P3 Markets an independent organization or are they a developer? I, I thought they had an interest in buying the mall.
I think they were originally. They came down to meet with, with Sid and, well, the partners, right? Because what they're primarily known for is transit oriented development. That's their bread and butter.
My, my concern is this, you know, I have some experience with commercial properties and anytime a developer wants to, you know, take an interest in a property, it's at their expense to do these items. And this is what we should have done as a city when we made our investment. And I do agree that we need these items now. But if this is a developer that has an interest, I think that's a conflict of interest. I also think that we should, you know, get some other bids or pricing. I mean, we waited four years, you know, we can wait another month to, to, you know, see if this is a, I'm going to say a fair market price. Those are my thoughts on it. But, you know, do you have any response to that?
He's not in a developer role, that was what you see many cities do. Because in many ways to choose a developer at this point would be extremely premature on your side. Again, just my opinion here, because then you'd be tied to them, right? This is kind of fundamentally the problem is that many of you, you know, sometimes people use what's called proxy developers or something like that, who basically sit in the shoes of a developer. And what would a developer want to see in order to, in order to kind of be attractive? Like, you know, it's that kind of thing, like how do you make yourself appear attractive to other suitors? So I think that's actually a selling point, not, not necessarily, there's, I, I, I don't, you know, because they're, we're not, they're, they have no, they have nothing to tie them. I mean, at this point, they don't, this is an agreement for services, not to develop or not to render an opinion on the valuation, to do a forensic analysis of the, of the, of the finances and to, and to give you some ideas on which ways you could move forward. If you choose to align down the road with them, fine, I don't. But there's nothing in the agreement that gives them preferential treatment or anything like that. So, you know, there's that. But, but again, I mean, you know, the, the reality is these, these are, these are time-consuming endeavors. They, and the other thing was, you know, the, the, I know you, you weren't present, but one of the reasons I think that this might be, you know, they were, the council and the EDC said, how quickly can you do this? Right? And so 30, 60, 90 days. You know, if time is of the essence, folks typically price that out in a, in a, in a manner that, that, you know, that, that requires that, that kind of speed. That might be, you know, some of that, but.
I have a question for Mr. Messick. You said something about the, the money could come from the EDC? I mean, do they have money available for this or?
On the cash side, there is about $90,000 left at the EDC fund. Yes, sir. But the fund balance for the EDC, remember, it started out at, at the $5 million because that was the investment of the mall. So that's your beginning fund balance. And of course, we're paying down $400,000 a year and that's bringing that fund balance down. But, but now we're right near $4 million on the fund balance side. So yeah, I mean, it would draw down the fund balance at the end of the year. It would spend what little cash it has left. But I mean, or we could just spend the cash out of the general fund. Either way.
Okay.
So, Mr. Burden, you have more questions?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I, I kind of think time is of the essence on this. We've got, we've got a balloon payment coming in. When? So if, if, we need to, we need to find out what, what we've got in this thing and where the monies have gone. Where's that 20 million? Where's our 5.4 million? And, and take it from there. I think we have a bigger equity now in that mall than maybe even the partners have, possibly. What would you guess, maybe a million and a half, maybe? On top of the 5.4? That would, that would put us more than 50%.
Well, the, your payments are, go towards principal and it's, but, but you're correct in that the interest, of course, is accumulating on that.
So if I may just help a little bit, the scope of the work that you're looking at, and remember this, everyone, if you can, that in order to fix a problem, we have to understand what the problem is. And we've been trying to figure it out on our own. And remember, most of the council members are not here, but the previous council, I recommended to them and I said, we need to determine, and the EDC all agreed, that we need to determine the value of our asset. What do we really own for 5.4 million dollars? And not just in terms of ownership, which puts us at a 45.7 ownership, but in terms of the value of the property as it sits. But most importantly, with the variable considering the debt service that that mall has is what's killing us, the debt service, the 20 million, 26, wasn't it? The final number we looked at, 26 million?
It's, it's been paid down a little bit, but it's the 22 million, something like that.
22. So we got 22 million plus, does that include our 5.4? No, that's not including our 5.4. It puts us almost at 30 million in the hole, okay? So we, this should have been, and everybody knows it now, should have been done. But if you look at what we're doing, we're being fiscally responsible, which we promised our citizens we would do to try to fix this problem. And that is, they will be responsible for supplying all underlying data. They, the city will. But this is what this forensic, and he's one of the top forensic accountants, you know, within the United States. He, he's going to review all provided materials with, with a forensic lens, identify discrepancies, gaps and risk, analyze the property's financial health, liabilities, rent flow and underlying asset value. Deliver a clean, transparent pro forma and valuation report based on the current, not speculative, conditions for municipal and public transparency. Then he's going to move into legal and ownership structure, all investor term sheets and ownership agreements, partnership and LLC operating agreements, capital call histories, contribution records, any legal disputes, liens and settlements since 2021, financial and accounting records from '21 to the present, monthly profit and loss, balance sheets, general ledgers, bank statements and reserve accounts, reconciliation reports, payable unpaid bills register, complete list of all liabilities, lending and mortgage documentation, how did his loans come about? What did he do with his money? What do you do with our money? Rent roll and revenue flow? How long has he been having the rent rolls and what is he paying? We currently don't know what he's renting out those spaces for. Some of them may be under market value, some may be at market value. We don't know, but we will know now. And what this is going to do is give us a comprehensive understanding of where we stand and what is our value asset worth. When we do that, now we can start engaging in the dialogue between us and our partners to determine if there's anything in there that has been detrimental to the city. And if it has been, then we take the correct legal action to address it. But right now, we're blind. We don't know any of this information. And we should have had this information from the inception of the idea to go invest at 5.4 million. So we're now trying to correct the problem by identifying where the problems are at. And then we're able to comprehensively address it, in a nutshell.
And there, you, you brought up something, I think, and if anybody was in that room at that meeting, we added actually a component, which is the insurance, the whole insurance thing. Because there's, that really needs to be looked at very hard.
He just got hit with $600,000 increase in insurance premiums due to several liability issues. Excuse me? Oh, sorry, excuse me, let me refrain from that. Yes, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, we're not going to have any comment from the public. Sorry, no, sir. No, sir, you don't. You had your three minutes at the beginning. Please sit down, sir. Let us continue. Representatives of me, the voice. No, sir, sorry. Members of council, I ask you. Sir, you're disrupting the meeting? Please sit down, I've already told you no. So you had your opportunity, the citizens to be heard. It was very clear, the three minutes for all items. Please sit down, Mr. Lucero. Kindly, kindly, sir, please sit down. Please sit down. Kindly, please sit down, sir, I'm asking, or kindly. Thank you, sir. Let us continue with the progress of the meeting. Sir?
Frank.
Sir? Sir, you're violating the rules of the decorum you've been asked.
Frank, I have a question for you. As far as the vote goes, does this require a majority vote or a super majority vote to approve?
It just requires a majority vote, sir.
I hope everything's been answered for you. So let's go ahead and call the vote on this. Mr. Burden, I'll wait till you get back to your seat. Ms. Weaver has made a motion to approve, second by Mr. Ebersol. Let's go ahead and call the vote. Mr., Ms. Weaver, go right ahead, starting with you.
Aye.
Mr. Ebersol?
I approve.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Sellers?
Nay.
Mr. Burden?
I approve.
Okay. So motion carries, three to two. Two nays and three ayes. Thank you very much, council, for your input and your valuable understanding of what's going on. Okay, now let's move on to the next item, item number four. Discussion and possible action to approve a contract with Sigset Engineering to provide additional engineering support to relocate Sol's water lines for the Hillcrest Drive reconstruction project. Ms. Messick, I mean, Mr. Messick and Ms. Anderson.
It's Mr. Tonight, maybe on the weekends, I don't know.
He's ahead of you.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, when I put the agenda items together, I started out with a $20,000 contract and then hit you with the 45. And so this one, I'm hitting you with 150. And so this one, I'm hitting you with a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar contract. But at least with mine, there's cost savings associated with it. So I'll get right into the background of it. So this action item is discussion and action to approve a contract with six S engineering to provide additional engineering support to relocate Saul's water lines. And this is for the Hillcrest Drive reconstruction project. And so the background is when we first put the budget together for this and we were in, in discussion with Saul's, they were very adamant that they were not going to move their water lines, absolutely not. But with the persistent pounding of Mr. Jeff here and for Ms. Anderson, Saul's has finally come around and said, yeah, we should probably do that since you're building a new street. And so they agreed to contribute to the project. And so Saul's is going to pick up the cost of relocating the existing water lines under Hillcrest Drive for us. However, the engineering costs for this rest with the city. And so that's what we're asking for tonight. A contract proposal from six S to provide additional engineering support for the relocation of the lines is hereby submitted for your vote tonight. So the cost of the contract, as we said, is a hundred and sixty-nine or a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. But the city initially budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for this, okay? We knew they were adamant, but we figured we better budget it anyway, just in case they changed their mind. And so we set aside five hundred thousand dollars in our budget for it. It's only going to cost us a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the engineering services. So we're saving the, the city in essence, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we normally would have paid ourselves. And so, um, Mr. Jeff, Mr. Swain is our city engineer. He's here tonight to answer any questions. Ms. Roses as well. But this seems like a no-brainer, considering the relocation of the water lines is advantageous to the project and the need to keep the project on schedule, plus the cost savings. We certainly recommend approving the contract with six S. And you have that contract in your package and all the subcontractors that he plans to use and how they're going to be paid. And like I said, I'm here and we're all here to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, Councilman Burton, go ahead.
Which, which is the water line going in the balcony side? Is CPS going to provide gas relocation also?
Well, I think right off the bat, I'm going to be deferring to Mr. Jeff.
Million dollar man.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Uh, Jeff Swaim, six S Engineering Project Manager and City Engineer. Been on this project a very long time, it seems like now, since about two thousand and twenty, somewhere in that, when Ms. Salem and I worked to, to go for funding on this. So to answer your question on the water main, we have a, what we call a shared use path that's going on. It would be the balcony side. Now, this line does have to shift around because it currently shifts around as it goes all the way down the road. So there'll be some on both, both sides. What we'd like to do with some of this line also is to place some casing in the service lines. That way it's easier to maintain in the future. I'd say the majority is balcony side.
Okay, so it, it's not like our, our old water stuff that we have here in the city where it was running in the street. We're going to move it off-street.
Yes, sir. We want it outside the, we want, we, sir?
One point it's going to cross back under the street?
We have to cross to maintain, you know, flow and service everywhere. So there will have to be crossings. But we, we want it out from under the road because we're, our expectation is to come back with a concrete road. That's, it's been the plan from originally.
Are you adding any more fire hydrants?
Ooh, well, actually, this hasn't been designed yet. All that we've done thus far in coordinating with Saul's, as, as Floyd mentioned, you know, Saul's wasn't on board with doing anything. So what we did is we provided envelopes and we're recommending the utilities to joint bid and to, to move out from under the concrete.
Okay. It would be another, would there be another engineering cost if CPS decided to join in to move the gas lines and?
I, it, I don't, I would not expect that. And they do most of their design now, if they decide to do it. That's the thing. We've had several meetings with them through the past few years and we're, we're trying to get them on board with that. But again, we'd like all the utilities that we can get outside the pavement. There are a couple of power poles that we're also coordinating with them to discuss relocation of. And there's some ways that maybe we can engineer around them a little bit to, to save that. Getting the water out's a big win. That, that line's around fifty years old at least. And so getting it out from under the.
Sewer would still go underneath.
Yes, sir, sewer would, and there are expectations to replace some of the sewer. Some of the sewer is, is ours, cities, and some of it is Saul's. But it would go either in the central median area. We try to keep those manholes out of the wheel paths is our objective.
Yes, I'd like to make one motion approved. Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Burton, to approve. We have a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, now we call for further discussion. Any further discussion or questions regarding?
The, the, the line, is it, oh, I mean, Hillcrest is our dividing point, isn't it? I mean, you know, like, if it's on our side, it's our problem. If it's on city's side, it's their problem. So it's like, what side is the majority of it on?
I don't have the plans right for me, but the majority, from my recollections, majority is on our side, city's side.
City's side.
Yes, ma'am. And there, the other thing that's, that's part of this is, is some environmental that we have to get going because if we don't do the environmental, we can't start the right-of-way coordination acquisition. And so that's also paramount in here.
I was just wondering which side it was on because we're still way over there. Remember, see, when I moved here, Hillcrest was gravel. Okay, so there's a lot of things that happened and I just don't know exactly where they're at.
It's really weird though, because that, that, what is that, the north, east boundary? That's, that right-of-way is where City of San Antonio is. So it's like from that right-of-way line, the other direction is City of Balconies.
We have a motion, any other questions? Okay, Mr. Burton, let's call for the vote.
We're going, we're talking sewer lines, we're not talking road quality, right?
No, no, I don't think so.
If you mind repeating the question?
Lines and things like that under the ground, not the quality of the road on top, right?
Yes, sir. The quality of the road.
I mean, asphalt. The asphalt. I mean, it, it just seems like it's continually falling out. Like there's, you can get an A, B, C or D, right? And if we get a, if we vote for a D road, I don't think that it's going to last very long.
Oh, the pavement, the pavement section recommended right now and then what we proposed to text dot is, is concrete. Now, that doesn't mean that you cannot develop a good flexible section. We have other flexible sections. When I say flexible, that's asphalt paving. Right now, the intent is to go with concrete.
I mean, does that withstand, like, all the bus traffic that's going up and down the road? It's, I mean, I've never heard anybody complain more than all the citizens that live in the apartments and stuff like that. Every time I see them, the, the roads and the potholes in the street.
Yes, sir. We have geotechnical recommendations on the pavement sections. They're all, all of those incorporate design for heavier loading buses via coordination, those type of things, bus stops.
Is VIA going to contribute to any of the finances to this road, to some of the roads? Since they used to put road pads and things like that into the area as well, that they were helping fund some of this.
Now, I'm not aware of that.
Something to check into though, because on, on every bus stop, on, almost every bus stop on Fredericksburg, they made that big old cement thing because it kept eating the asphalt, eating the gravel and everything else. So if they're going to do that, they did that there, because they invested over there on Hillcrest to help you all out.
I don't know if, I don't know who's contributing money, but I do know that with a concrete section, that's going to help. Because you are correct, they put the pad there for the buses when they shove and stop. That's why they do that.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote, Mr. Burton.
Yay.
Mr. Sellers?
Nay.
Mr. Hernandez?
Nay.
Mr. Ebersol?
Approved.
Ms. Weaver?
Nay.
So vote is five-oh, no nays. Vote passes for a majority of the ayes. Okay, let's move on now to item number five. Discussion and possible action to accept the adopted two thousand and twenty-six balcony sites crime control and provincial district budget. This should be a pretty easy one, considering we went over it earlier.
You said it correct, Mayor. We've already beat this one in the, in the crime control meeting. The next step is to accept it here and that's what we're proposing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Burton has moved for that motion to be approved.
Second.
Councilman Hernandez is second. Uh, any questions? The only thing I have is just a quick one. How long is the contract extended between the crime control mission that currently? Is it twenty years, ten years, fifteen years, the current contract that's in place?
Yes, I think it was, what, two years ago that we approved it for, for twenty years, the maximum term? Yes, sir.
It was approved for how many years?
The, the maximum term, which I believe is twenty years, is that right? Uh, no, I, that was before my time, yes, sir. It was for, but it was for a long period of time. Yes, sir.
Alrighty, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, second. No further questions. We'll start with Ms. Weaver. Yea or nay to approve that? Yay, yay, Councilman Ebersol? Approved, Councilman Hernandez?
Nay.
Councilman Sellers?
I'm going to sustain from voting.
Sustain, okay. Councilman Burton?
Nay.
Okay, so we have four in favor and one sustained. Uh, Councilman Sellers is sustained, so therefore majority of the four votes.
Or clarification, abstained.
He abstained. You abstained, not sustained, right? Okay. Okay, sustain or abstain?
Abstained.
Abstained, right? Thank you, sir. All right, let's go ahead and move. Six, discussion on the fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-six council budget calendar. Ms. Messick again.
Uh, yes, sir. Real briefly here, th, this is the presentation of your budget calendar for the FY twenty-six fiscal year. Just to go over it real quickly, we, we do have four budget workshops planned, starting on, tentatively, if things go well and we get the right numbers from the county, we'll start on seven July. And then after that, it's once a month. There is plenty of room in here to add more meetings if you wish. If things are going swimmingly, this is a calendar, it can be adjusted. You could say, you know, we don't want all these meetings. You can do that as well. But right, right now, we've got the, the first budget workshop, July seventh, then August fourth and September first, and September fifteenth for the public hearing. I'm sorry, the public hearing on the twenty-second, so that'd be a fifth. So there's plenty of time for us to, you know, debate the budget and fill in the blanks. Uh, it's on the calendar, sir. Yeah, yes, I was just reading off the calendar. And again, it's a flexible tool. Like I said, if you want to add more, it, it's no problem or, or take away, whatever.
Any other questions?
It's a, it's a one-pager, yes, there is. Are you having troubles finding it or?
It's right after the, the adopted balcony sites crime control convention budget item? Yeah, item number.
It, it's in the council packet. I think we're on item number four or five or seven right now or?
I might have missed that other part, but when I looked at my packet, all I had was this. I never had all those other items that he has. So I might have missed it, but maybe I didn't get it, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, it, it, it was in those one hundred and forty-four pages somewhere. It, it should be right before the council or for the department reports, if that helps. Either way, guys, I, I can send it out again in an email tomorrow. It's not a problem. Yes, sir.
We call for our, our, maybe our start of a wishlist?
Yeah, yes, sir. That's when we open it up. Typically, the July, or the very first one is very long. It's death by PowerPoint, where we show you everything, all the files and whatnot. But, yeah, that's when we get into it.
I think that, as we wanted collectively. I think many times I heard everybody in the council say that they want to get an early start. So we may start early. We may call a special meeting. It started, it's putting the door right away. Start developing your wish lists for the benefit of the community and determine whether it's feasible. It's where we can pick it around and determine if it's going to be something that we can do. And put together and formulate your plans. For example, if you want to improve the lighting of the community with LED lighting and improve that, well, start doing your research now, cost factors, to have an idea, estimates. You can go online and check this out. If you want to do a sign for the city in the front, kind of a advertising sign that lights up and happy birthday to the citizens, next meeting at this time, this time. That's the wishlist. Put it together, get yourself a little bit of information on it and then bring it to.
And, and that's very important to understand because a lot of times, the way this, and Mr. Burton knows that, we'll go all the way through the budget cycle and in September, we're ready to vote and somebody, well, I wanted this and I wanted. Well, that's too late at that point. Yeah, so if you want something, get it in early. Yes, sir.
Staff, send a, okay, if anybody's with a good special meeting, we could do it. Call a meeting, we get started early, get the budget processed so we get ahead of the game. Sound good?
Yes, sir. There's, there's no action with this one, so.
Okay, great. Um, department reports and Q and A, police department. Let's start with the police department first. Mr. Enriquez, go right ahead if you want to address our police department.
In, in your packets, you'll see that there's been an, uh, yeah, it, it's a lot, I know. But all the, uh, the reports from police are there, calls for service and whatnot and with historical as well. I don't know if you had anything specifically that you wanted to address with respect to police.
Go ahead, sir.
Is police still going to start closing the, the last few nights, it hasn't been closed? And this past weekend, we had people park in there, you know?
Yeah, I was informed by the, the on-duty sergeant that there's a call about the park being open. But being that we're limited on two officers a shift and they get calls for service left and right, sometimes the calls will end up for me being thirty minutes to over an hour, leaving with one officer in the city if they have to run down to the jail. And so calls are back to back, but they've been addressed about, you know, closing the park in time and matter when possible.
Is there a way we can get the fire department to close, close the park also?
I mean, we can, that's something that me and the chief would have to talk about if they'd be able to help assist. You know, because I mean, there, there's times, there's times where, you know, it's back-to-back calls, you know, for the officers with, we're only two in the city.
And I understand that.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, there, there's never an issue, you'll be forced to call and then we'll, we'll just matter.
And then, oh, go, go ahead, go ahead.
You still have the floor.
Uh, is, is this the appropriate time to ask about the police vehicles? Were the motor blue? Can you enlighten us on that?
As far as the, the maintenance on the vehicles, Mr. Bruce Timmons, he's very well aware of what's going on with the vehicles. Anytime that, uh, the thing about the police vehicles, they, they run twenty-four seven unless the officers are doing a PR or they go to lunch, but they're constantly ran. There are always maintenance whenever something is going wrong with them. The officers will address it with Bruce and he gets it done in time and manner. He does take it to a certain place to get serviced. He, he always makes sure that the price is very good before he even moves on anything. But as far as that, and in any kind of engines that are blown out or anything like that, it's all the normal way in terror. But whenever they're down, Mr. Timmons, he's always addressing them in the time and manner.
Since I, since I've been here, I, I haven't heard of an engine blowing, except for back in the.
This is the transmission, you know, they'll, they'll go out over time, sir.
So is there any truth to what rumor was that they were traveling highways?
That, that's another internal issue that I got going on with an officer. But as far as that going at that speed, that's a totally different matter. It has nothing to do with the, the engine transmission blowing out or anything like that.
I have a question for Lieutenant Herrera. What is the current count that we have right now in the police force, full-time and part-time?
So right now, we have, I'd say about eight officers on patrol, got four sergeants. Um, as far as the reserve, we got two right now. One strictly for CID, the other one is a patrol officer.
So we only have twelve on staff?
Yes, sir. So right now. So right now, currently, we run a two-man shift right now. So that's what we're limited to. So our, our goal is to continue going out to the police academies, trying to get in reserves to to help assist as well. But the, the thing is, is that a lot of the academies, a lot of other agencies, they offer incentives to, um, keep people and stuff like that. But this type, this day and age with the crime that's going on everywhere, people don't want to work for free. You know, that's, that's a known given, you know, especially when we go out to, like, the mall, whenever they have functions for law enforcement day where they have different recruiters. Um, that was the main thing. A lot of people don't want to do, uh, reserves. The only times that you're going to get reserves are when, um, you know, sad to say, you know, older officers, they want to just get commissioned so they can go out and do side jobs or, like, lane closures and stuff. Um, those type of reserves that you'll get in here, uh, they're not the response time to help out. It's not going to be the same versus a full-timer. You know, so, um, a lot of officers are going to get hurt, you know, those type of things. But right now, we're doing the best that we can with the staff that's in staff. Just like I informed Mr. Burton, we only have two officers within the city per shift right now. So, um, we've been asking for years for more bodies, but unfortunately, we we're, we're at this point right now.
I know previously, Mr. Messick had said we were like at sixteen, I think, total. Did we, did we lose some?
Last year, we we were budgeted for eighteen, sorry, eighteen and a half positions. Uh, we did, uh, decrease that by one this year, so now it's at seventeen and a half. Uh, we went through a, a major restructuring, so to speak, where we made ourselves less top-heavy and made ourselves more bottom-heavy, more officers. That saves the city money, but it also gets more patrol officers out on the street. Uh, we ended up, uh, doing away with all the corporals, basically. And so now we're structured, we're more fully staffed. They have, I believe it's one sergeant and two patrol officers.
Yes, sir. But right now, with, with the movement and everything right now, it's just sergeant and another officer working per shift.
So how many do we have on payroll?
That I would defer.
Twelve?
No. I don't think that's counting the investigators, though.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it would be like fifteen, I believe.
Okay.
So we're down, well, I think, what, two officers? Is that what we're?
So we're down, I believe, two, probably three. And, and then I have another question. Is Bruce Timmons, the guy who's in charge of fleet vehicles, does he report to you? He reports to, to myself and the chief whenever there's maintenance that needs to be done with the vehicles. Um, like I said, Mr. Timmons, he's worked with us for many years. And, uh, any, anything that's going wrong with the vehicles, of course, the officers address it. They bring it up to him. They have to fill out a work, a work form, just so he's aware of what is, what's going on with any kind of vehicle. We could be anywhere from, like, a computer issue. It could be anywhere for oil change, any, anything that's wrong with the vehicle, he's automatically notified. Then he notifies the administration, hey, this is what's going on, and then he proceeds to move forward with it.
So I have a suggestion. I don't know if the council backs me on this, but I'd like to have Mr. Timmons attend these council meetings. Oftentimes, we have questions about the vehicles, and he would be the best person to ask, so he should be here.
Sir, I'll, I'll go and get with him when I see him in the morning and advise him that he'd probably need to attend the, the next council meeting to address the questions you have as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Sellers.
These reserve officers. Are they required to serve some in internship?
So a lot of the, the reserve officers that, that we, we try to issue for, they're already licensed. Um, a lot of the officers that are in the academy, um, they have to get, of course, they have to pass their state exam and all that kind of stuff before we can even look at their, their stuff. Um, I know with two, two other, uh, when we start looking into the academies, we encourage them to come out, do ride-alongs while they're in academy. I know some academies, they do require the cadets to come out just to see what it's like in the police world, especially in balcony heights, you know, it's a very busy city. So, um, but again, if they, once they pass their exams, we go through the whole motions of the hiring process and stuff. They have to go through different phases just before they get on the streets.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is Mr. Burton, you still here? So, Mr. Burton, I have to say that some of your questions regarding the, um, concern about the vehicles, I have to agree with you. Um, and I, I totally disagree with the response that our lieutenant has given us. That seems to be a reoccurring answer that we get all the time. I personally have been at your home when I visit it, stop by, and you literally can hear the vehicles coming with no calls, no type of any kind of, of, uh, response to any call, and they are flooring those vehicles. I've heard them up and down my street. I've heard them all over. When they're not on duty, when, I mean, they're not on calls, they're flooring them, and they're passing stop signs. They're hitting the brakes. I mean, just really abusing these vehicles. And I find it totally unacceptable that you would make a comment like that, because that's not the truth. And the evidence is in the maintenance of those vehicles. Having to have to replace engines, having to have to replace brakes on a continuous basis in a point-seven-square-mile radius city is unacceptable. The officers, and I, I will find out who they are down the line, are not taking care.
Departmental?
It's a Q and A. I guess I wanted to ask and get into my question.
Okay.
Um, so my question is, how do you determine that these vehicles are not being abused? Are you out on patrol with them to make sure that, that protocol is being followed on calls and to ascertain your response to that?
Sir, there, there's plenty of signs where they've gone on, on calls with officers. A lot of the, the traffic that you probably see going down on gentlemen, that's a quicker way to, instead of bypassing the, uh, the stoplights and stuff. Usually, our, our highest crime area is at forty-two-ten at the Harrison Grant. Got a lot of trespassers, got a lot of assaults that happen down the way. So the quickest route to go down is on gentlemen. But anytime that the officers are responding to an emergency, lights and sirens should be going on. Uh, that were to happen, um, if you wouldn't mind, please call in the department so we can address the matter. But any, anytime that the vehicle goes over a certain limit, the dash cam automatically goes on.
See, that's not our job, okay? That's your job. That's the chief, we don't have right now, his job. Should have been a long time ago addressed. It hasn't, and it's costing the taxpayer thousands and thousands of dollars. We bought brand-new vehicles for you guys, and they're not being taken care of. The equipment is not properly being maintained, not from the perspective of maintenance, but from the perspective of use. So we'll move on down the line from there. You, you answered the question from your response, which I'm not satisfied with, boom, we'll address on another issue.
Mayor, may I ask another question?
Uh, yes.
So, uh, Lieutenant Herrera, he, he brought up a good point, and you kind of alluded to something like, do we have some sort of, uh, like, review of the cameras when it triggers off at a certain speed? And if so, who's reviewing it? Who's, you know, managing that?
So, uh, whenever officers respond to calls, whenever it involves an arrest or whatever, we all, we always have to look at the body cam and the video footage of what's going on. Now, I know you had mentioned a certain issue earlier that I told you was under investigation. That's one of the reasons why we review camera video all the time. So whenever something like that arises, it's brought to our attention, and we address the matter in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So what I'd like to see in the future is what we had before, when I requested, and it should have been ongoing. You haven't been producing a report on complaints, on terminations, and any new hires. Yeah, we see someone that come before the council, but we don't get to see the actual problems that are occurring internally, and we need to know that. This council needs to be aware of what's going on in our department. Just this, statistically, you say we have seventy-eight officers. Now, I have been telling you, and I've been telling your chief, the same thing. This line of explanation in which you keep telling us that people do not want to work for free is not a correct statement. I have talked to professionals that are out there, that are consultants in police work. They specialize in police departments. And they have told me that that is basically a crock of line of just fluff. Because there's plenty of officers out there that will work for the exchange of the badge and the gun and carrying a commission. So that's not really a true statement, and I don't really think the department is showing us anything documented that can prove differently. You haven't provided any kind of documentation or resource to tell us. We have visited four different schools. We've done this, we've done this, we've done that. That would be nice, Lieutenant, if we can get that down the line somewhere. That would help us understand to document what you're doing for the council.
Mayor, you bring up some good points. What I recommend is that, you know, let's, I've jotted most of these down, and I'll, I'll meet with the lieutenant on those and try to get an answer.
Okay, so, you know, a lot of these things, we've seen the cars where they're just idling, officers are out of.
We can, we'll, we can address all that, yes.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then, right now, um.
And fire, are, are we going to talk to fire also?
I'm sorry, yes, we can, we can ask fire after that.
Any, any needs, and, you know, BAs or supposes, or we're all good?
Well, currently, we have a, a grant in progress. We haven't received notification, but it's for fifteen, uh, new SCBAs with thirty-two extra bottles. And I think the grant total is going to be about two hundred thousand dollars, request all that equipment, so we're all fingers across on that. Um, currently, our, our ladders being a thorn in the side, I mean, it's twenty-one years old. So maintenance costs on that are, are getting up there, but, you know, like I said, a, a new ladder is up to three million, so. And, and once, once, hopefully, we get this grant for the BAs, and we can pursue a grant for a, a new ladder truck and, you know, hopefully, that'll fall through. They'll be, Scott, they'll be the, the most latest ones, be compliant with the other jurisdictions around here, because we're, we're the oddballs out.
Do we, do we refill our own bottles, or do you?
Yes, no, we refill them. Uh, last year, we, two years ago, we requested a grant and for a new air compressor, and we were awarded that for about sixty-six thousand. We were able to get that air compressor plus a few other items that we needed, some fans and some other. Yes, we just signed up for that.
So I have one other issue I want to bring up that I had, uh, you, and it's a Q and A on this one. What is our, do we have a policy implemented for the vehicle storage facilities? A while back, I paid a visit over to the storage facility at the maintenance department, and I was astounded at what I saw. And that means that we have, do we, let me ask you, chief, or, excuse me, um, lieutenant. Do we have, um, a written inventory of all the unsecured property that has been taken out of impounded vehicles? I saw all the stuff, and we asked the maintenance gentleman, what was all these tools and some other stuff that was there, and just scattered around. He said, this is the, this is the property that is removed from impounded vehicles. And I asked him, is there an inventory list for this? Who keeps track of all this property that's in there? And his answer, there's none. There's no inventory list, to my knowledge. We don't know. So anybody can come in and grab what's in this property, that if somebody's vehicle gets towed, whatever they have inside, we have no tracking device, no inventory, uh, system, which you're mandated by the Texas Department of, um, of License on the VS, on the VSF fees. You're supposed to conduct written inventory of any unsecured property and vehicles under the removal and safe storage of all secured property in the vehicle. My question to you is, it's obvious, I don't see it now. We've never seen an inventory report of that property in any of our council reports from the police department. Can you answer me? Do we have an inventory report form that you have on file? And has the chief has been keeping log of that property? Or is it just there, and anybody can grab the property, take it? Nobody would know it's missing?
Are you talking, are you talking about what's in the, the storage facility, or are you talking about in the impound lot?
I'm referring to when you mean impounding vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, let's just say it's impounded, and then now it's going to go for auction. For whatever reason, that vehicle now is going to be, um, uh, sent to an auction. You obviously inventory the vehicle to begin when, when you make the stop.
Whenever, whenever a vehicle is impounded.
You have to make an inventory.
You have to make an inventory, sir.
Correct.
It goes on, it goes on the list whenever an officer inventories the property. Also, that individual that is arrested or the vehicle gets impounded for no driver's license, insurance, or whatever, they also are aware that the, the, the stuff's getting inventoried.
Okay.
It's on the list.
And when it doesn't get collected, say the vehicle does not get collected by the owner.
They get, they get sent out notifications by.
And then once you meet all those requirements.
Yes, sir.
Now we have their property. Let's just say you have a thousand-dollar battery charger in the back of the trunk that you inventory. Now, you keep it over at the maintenance department, to my understanding. So there I saw, it was just totally disarrayed, it wasn't inventoried, looked at in any way whatsoever. When you now decide, and you've met the criteria, to go ahead and sell the vehicle at an auction, what happens to the property that you pulled out of that vehicle?
Anything that's pulled out of the vehicle, it's, we, we don't collect it.
What do you do?
It's discarded, because a lot of, a lot of these, a lot of the vehicles that are impounded, a lot of vehicles that we have to clean out for auction, we look into their items that are either, they have fluids on them or anything like that. We don't collect them. We leave it as is. If it's inventory, it's inventory. They have a chance to come by and pick it up. They get notified several times before it goes over to auction.
That's understandable. Once, excuse me.
Volunteer to discard that property.
Yeah, and so, um, so when you do that, what you're telling me is the process, and I understand that. But once that process is complete, now you have a piece of property you're going to liquidate, turn into revenue for us. What happens to that two thousand, a thousand dollar, let's just use that as a example, piece of property?
Mayor, we're going way.
Well, that's what I mean asking.
But, but my.
Nay, what happens to the inventory?
This item is the review of the report by the council and questions on the report. We're going into great detail. I, I believe we'll probably need an agenda item on the impound.
We should make that up. We'll address that in an agenda item, and I'd like to see a response to that and determine what you do with those sheets and where they're at, to show us what you got in inventory, and I'll get, I'll task our city administrator to do that with you. To make sure, so that he can get with you and determine where this property is at, what happened to it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Enriquez, I think we can get together on that and develop that?
Absolutely, Mayor. I add that to the, to the list of, of things that we want to touch base on.
Great, okay, great. So anything else for the fire department? Anyone? Community development, anyone else? Um, Ms. Anderson, would you like to provide some input?
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on the code issues that were brought up. So as many of you know, we've been, um, without a code officer since January. And prior to that, we did have a code officer in place who, his performance unfortunately did not meet the city's expectations or the needs for the community. Um, so because of that, I think there has been a lack, I know there has been a lack of code enforcement throughout the city. Um, but the good news is, as of a week ago, we have a new code officer who is already working on, um, bringing properties into compliance. And so you can be, you can get on our iWorks and look at the cases that have recently been opened, and he is working very hard on bringing a lot of these properties into compliance. So I'm confident that the residents and y'all will see, um, the results and our enforcement in the near future.
I have a question on that. Um, so does this officer have the criteria needed to issue citations?
So when we were doing our interviewing process, the ones that were licensed already were asking over for what we were offering. But, uh, I was able to find a peace officer who is licensed as an animal control officer, and he has a class scheduled in August to begin his code, um, class to acquire that license.
And did we hire him on a contract basis, or is he an employee?
He's an employee.
I thought we had a hiring freeze.
So when is he going to introduce himself to us?
I, I guess at the next city council meeting. He just started.
So who hired him?
We hired him.
Who's we?
I hired him.
Enriquez hired him?
I believe that was already in the works, but uh I've met him, I believe his uh 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 Jeremy, I believe is his name, he, he was actually here, Mayor, for the listening session. If you recall, actually, that was his first day on the job. If that's right, I don't know.
Yeah, so that, we did, I did speak with Mr. Enriquez prior to hiring him, and he did um direct me that I could hire him, and we would have that part-time opening for the code officer that we were looking to hire.
Yes, sir.
I believe several months ago, when we lost our code officer, we had, we had this conversation about looking, looking for a new one, and they, they had been in the process to do that several administrators later. You know, but, you know, uh it's been in the makings, it's just that it's new to me that there, there's actually one here now? And we haven't met him?
Any other comments?
I have a question, so he, when will he be, I guess, fully certified to issue citations?
As soon as he gets his class done and has a sponsor for him for a few of cases, then he can get his citation, his license, which will give the ability to give.
What's the EPA on that?
His class is in August, and so when that class is over, he'll start his training with a code officer. He can, what we're trying to do right now is me, um, Mr. Enriquez and I, he can, like, when he was at Terrell Hills, Terrell Hills PD um hired him as a reserve officer to only give citations for code violations. So that's what we are presenting to the police department to see if they could hire him as a reserve only to enforce code. Once that happens, which I'm told it doesn't take much to do, um then he can start giving citations.
Okay, let's make that happen, Roger, please.
Working on that, yeah.
What, what's his salary?
I believe it was fifty-four. It's full-time.
But we've got to send him to school.
It's a two hundred dollar course, I believe.
Yeah.
For the license, it's a two hundred dollar course, two to three hundred dollar course, I believe.
Okay, let's move on. Any other questions? We'll address that with the city administrator down the line, so we don't have to publicly deal with that right now. Um announcement, comments, and requests. Um, Mr. Sellers, would you like to have an announcement?
This goes back to uh the maintenance yard that you stated there was being stuff stored there, and I had mentioned this before. With that new to me, and with our maintenance equipment there, there has never been a secured gate there. So when our maintenance man leaves that area and goes shooting down the road on his lawnmower, that whole place is open for vagrants and thieves and homeless, and there, there has to be a secure gate there. And I've mentioned that before, and I think we need to address that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. He can internally instruct Mr. Enriquez. That doesn't have to be voted on.
So can I say something to that? Um we did get a quote for that, and we got one, like, one or two quotes, and it was over fifteen thousand dollars to put a secure gate there. And the other issue was with our frontier waste collection service, like, they, he wouldn't be able to lock it, and the truck wouldn't fit in there to pick up the roll-off dumpster and the trash from there. So that was an issue as well.
Saying the fifteen thousand dollar gate wasn't wide enough for the.
Well, the opening, the opening.
Oh, the opening itself?
Yes.
So you have to have a sliding gate instead of a swinging gate?
Well, the truck doesn't fit in the opening to go to the back, because the roll-off's in the back. The roll-off dumpster's in the back of the public work building.
I'm not sure. I follow that. I mean, if there's a sliding gate there, it's, the sliding gate opens from the community center to the, to
To the shop.
Other side of the driveway.
So.
It, it's, it's open, you know, all the way.
But it's not wide enough for the truck to reverse into there.
But the truck's going through there now, right?
I guess, yeah, it is. So when I spoke to Frontier, when I spoke to the Frontier, they said it wasn't going to work for them to, for it to be locked.
Whatever out of. Okay, will um.
It sounds good.
Mr. Enriquez has heard your complaint, and I'm sure you and he can get together and address it. It's on his list to do. Um, so I think we've all noted, let's move forward. I just want to announce, if there's not any other announcements from the council members?
Are they doing anything to let uh these, any sort of citations?
Oh, you mean the warrants?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, no. Um, we can ask him directly if you like. You may respond to him, Lieutenant.
But, I mean, it's supposedly, there's supposed to be a lot of revenue out there that's just not being cleaned up and accountable. Um, I just thought I would ask that question to see if we're even going to talk about it or.
We asked to be, bring back the warrant officer program and still have to wait to see what the answer's going to be for that. I believe that we brought it back and bring back a lot of money to the city.
I know, I mean, that's just like, the council receivable, because your company, I mean, if you're not bringing in the money that you've already owe, I mean, that'll put you, that's, that's a lot of money that we're just saying it doesn't matter. I don't know, I, I think it might be worth looking at.
Yeah, Mr. Enriquez, you have that dotted down?
Yeah, just uh, I'd been made aware that there was once uh a warrant officer and asked about, you know, the type of money, came in and really received sort of a mixed bag on that. Some folks said, yes, it was very lucrative. Others said, not so much. Currently, I think they're using uh, uh the law firm, Linebarger, and, and uh, you know, the the, the, does the cost justify the, the additional, and so still weighing that, but definitely looking and concur that uh, looking for ways to generate revenue, but again, I it just depending on, on who you ask, right, uh was whether or not that was in fact a lucrative uh for the city at the end of the day, once you sort of pencil everything out.
I have a question on that, maybe Frank might be able to answer this. Does the contract with the law firm um pro, prohibit us from also having a, a warrant officer? Like, can we do both?
I don't think the contract prohibits the city from having a warrant officer.
I, I think it, I mean, even if we tried it for six months or something like that, just to find out what the true numbers are instead of what, what everybody thinks. I mean, if you want to know what's going on, find out, run a test. If it's making money, or, or you can find out, I mean, that's just to sit there and say it doesn't have any matter, and then it's like sitting all that, all that cash sitting over there, it might be worth looking at to see what, I mean, we need to know the truth.
I think we should do both. I mean, we can, we can get a warrant officer that's paid on commission on a contract basis. I wouldn't want to bring somebody else on as an employee, and then we can just hit it from both sides. So I don't know if that's more for Enriquez or Lieutenant Herrera, but I think that's a great idea.
Go ahead, Mr. Messi.
Oh, yes, sir. I think this is good conversation for our budget cycle. That's fixing to kick off. Uh, we did have budget off, or warrant officer before and Linebarger. The way it's trending, though, is people, is a lot of cities are getting away from the warrant officer. They're finding out that they're actually making more money just going through a collection agency, but we can present that later.
So I just want to make some uh quick announcements for the city achievements in the positive light. Uh, and for the citizens that are listening, and it's going to go out in the newsletter, it's already out. But we have been successful, congratulations, council, um from our congressman, um Castro, uh who has graciously awarded us the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to create the senior citizens facility from our old community center. So now we're just going to wait for the appropriations committee from congressional authority to release those funds. Hopefully, it doesn't get dogged, but it looks like really good. We're there. Uh, we got the approval, so the grant was passed, so that's really great for us. It's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're going to be able to utilize to create this senior citizen community center for our senior citizens, which is something that I've been working on. And um I like to give credit where credit is due, and Mr. Enriquez was very instrumental following the instructions that I asked him to follow, look for what to find in a certain grant. Once we found it, we went right after it. Thank you, Mr. Enriquez.
Mayor.
The council.
It's been my experience, um, and I've had a lot to do with older people.
Mm-hmm.
That um uh you're going to have to have, you know, checker tables, bingo, um, you know, some cards.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, everything that goes with old folks, you know.
And we'll do that, and hopefully bring back the old um, you know, potluck for them. You maybe have instructors for exercise and activities, and, I mean, all of this, we can all work like we did together to get it approved, to get it submitted. It'll be in your hands, how you want to do it for your community, but it's there. Of course you can, anyone over that's a senior citizen?
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, I mean, we could, this could turn into a whole thing, like, we're talking about the park improvements and things like that, walking trails and stuff that, I mean, you could build a whole thing, complex around here, uh, and then just cater to.
So I just wanted to bring that good news. The TERS, I'm glad y'all did that today, President Counting on the WODA is great. Um, the other thing that we've succeeded, and I'd like to report to you, is we've completed the upgrade to the dispatch. It's completely, uh, completely upgraded. The workstations are there, the chairs are there, everything, it's beautiful. And um I think you need to see the pictures, you'll see them in the newsletter, beautiful pictures of the dispatch. If you have a chance, see if you can take a tour, have somebody from the department running through there, and you'll see how nice it is. Very upgraded, and now we can take on up to additional three departments that can now contract with us for dispatch services to add revenue. So those are all plus things, and I think we need to go out there and just harp it out to our community and let them know that we're going to continue in those efforts. Mr. Enriquez, anything on your behalf, sir?
No, we're just going to, um, I wanted to mention that we're going to continue with the uh effort around grants. Uh, because, ju- just only because it's been mentioned quite a bit here in this discussion, there's a, a, a cops grant uh where we'll be asking for, eh, there's a cost share associated with it, so this, this isn't just to complete free money or anything, but uh what we're calling a community impact officer who's dedicated to quality of life issues and, and nuisance abatement patrols and things like that, to be, to begin to build a stronger relationship between, because the police are already overburdened with a, a lot of these uh for lack of a better term, nuisance calls. We, we need them out there uh patrolling, uh being out there present. And uh, and so this person, if you uh, you're familiar with sort of dealing with more quality of life sort of issues, and, and it's very much in the community-oriented policing model, and so we'll, we'll be submitting a grant for that, and uh, but I, I, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, we are very cognizant of all the challenges with respect to uh homeless encampments, the, the MOU, Mayor, that you're going to be at actually tomorrow, uh, with Bear County and Haven for Hope, this is where their outreach teams will be coming into balconies heights and assisting people in these encampments and whatnot to, to move out and into uh shelter and, and, and finding, because uh it is a humane way of dealing with uh a problem that's really plaguing communities all over, all over the all over the city, all over the county, everywhere. And so uh because of the efforts of the county and because of the efforts of Haven for Hope, and of course, this council and previous council as well, uh, uh signing off on that MOU to allow those outreach teams to come in here in cooperation with uh PD as well. Uh, one of the things that, the, the way the grant is structured is uh that maintenance shed would have to be relocated. So many of the things that you're referring to uh um uh could, could be sort of dealt with, because it's part of the rehabilitation of the center, is to re uh find another spot for that, and I've been in discussions with uh about the, the yard and all of that, and it, it could very well be moved. You know, the maintenance shed could be, you know, we could sort of deal with these. That's why it's very important uh to have uh discussions around all this before we do anything, so that we, you know, perhaps get a two-for-one, if you want to call it that. So that we solve the maintenance shed issues and all that, because you, you're right, to leave it open is, is just inviting trouble. Uh, so it might be better if it's placed somewhere where there's more eyes on the street, you know, and uh, and, and so we can look at that, that's a, that's a possibility that we could, we could uh ultimately address. And so uh, you know, the, as far as, you know, good news, I, I just want to uh commend the police department on the work that they've done with a very tragic event, the, the traffic fatality in front of Luby's. They acted very quickly and were able to get um snapshots or through surveillance cameras and all that, they were able to very quickly obtain uh images that I think proved quite useful. Uh, and, and I think they're, they're, you know, I, I don't, I know it's under investigation and all that, but I think that's going to prove to be very useful in, in actually bringing these folks to justice. Um, and so uh with, th- those are just a, a, a few of the things, Mayor, that we've been uh, uh working on uh here in, in the last few weeks.
Excellent. Uh, kudos to the police department for their work on that. I'm glad the perpetrator's been identified, and y'all are taking measures to do your investigation to close it out. And on behalf of the, uh, the lady, um, anything else?
Tell me what MOU stands for.
Memorandum of Understanding. It's an agreement, like, we understand that we will provide the services of support through our police department, fire department to identify potential issues that we have, homelessness and all that, and then they will, in turn, come over. Um, yes, engage, provide services, and if need be, move them out of the city, which will alleviate a lot of the core delivery services from the fire department and the police department as well. Yes, we've got a huge problem everywhere. Like you said, it's not just in our city. Mm-hmm. Okay, let's move on to item number ten, unless anybody else has anything else? Okay, do we have any agenda items, and they could be requested?
Yes.
To be placed in futures? Go ahead, Mr. Burton, very quickly.
Every, everybody was looking over my shoulder, I was like, I had all these things written down, it's like, y'all are bringing them up. First was, I, I think we should have a, a dispatch viewing for council and if, maybe even previous council that would like to to, to come see the new dispatch and, and uh take a tour, if you will, or take a uh, a quick look, see, if, if it doesn't uh take up officer time, uh, it, it'd be kind of a neat thing. Um, I, I wrote down, Tracy, thank you, the warrant officer program, I put that on there just as a question mark. Uh, and then uh on the agenda also, um, crime control. I, I, I still say that there was a vote made, and Jimmy was, was chair and, and Tracy was vice chair, but it's, it's, it's ambiguous right now, so let's, I would like to get that on the next council meeting and, and, and try and uh straighten it out, if you will.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving down, Mr. Sellers?
Uh, I don't know if this should be on the agenda or not, maybe we could budget a new mic for that right there. I mean, you know, how many times have we had to hit it with a hammer or something, you know? I mean, the, the mic can't be fifty bucks. Walmart.
Or, or a charging station for it, because we've been putting batteries in it, which it, at some point, I've seen little. it, at some point, I seen little contacts. I think there's a charging station for that microphone.
Okay, any oth- any other things?
I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are, are you finished, Mr. Sellers? Are you finished? Okay, I have several items. So, the first one I want to put on the agenda is that I'd like to have discussion and I'd like to have a, a, a vote to put limitation to travel expenses and reimbursement. Uh, former council, uh, Juan Lasea, I think, uh, you know, pushed that to extreme limits, nine hundred dollars on one, uh, trip for, you know, I'm going to say mileage and hotel, that seems kind of excessive. And then seven hundred plus on the last one. Um, I, I think the, you know, I want to prevent that from happening again. That's just taking advantage of the system. Um, so I would, I would like to see that on the agenda. Let me see here. Another item that I'd like to have on the agenda, uh, stemmed from today's meeting, um, I think that we should have on the agenda an official procedure for citizens to be heard slash address their agenda items. Um, I have some thoughts on that, but I'd, I'd like to put that on the agenda so that we can talk about time, uh, procedure, and see if we can come to agreement and just put that in place as council. Uh, the next item would be, um, I'd like to have on the agenda discussion and possible action for any new hire or promotion that's not mandated by the bargaining agreement, that the council would first be notified or maybe possibly require approval. Um, I think what's happening, what I've seen is, uh, you know, current employees are hiring and affecting our budget, promoting within, and I really think that the council needs to be aware what's going on, kind of give their blessing, if you will. And, uh, so I'd like to see that on the agenda as well. My last item that I'd like to see on the agenda, a couple of meetings back, council had discussed security procedures, um, and getting, you know, the, I guess, the background checks and stuff like that. And I know it was pushed on to a later date, but I think, uh, we need to get back to that and have an official ruling on what we're going to do as far as, um, you know, um, council and mayor, as far as, uh, background checks, getting the clearance and stuff as needed. So I like to see that on the agenda, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I think all of us have already passed the background check, including me. Uh, the much debated, why won't he get it? There must be something in his background. He doesn't want anybody to know. All these allegations, there is. I had my own personal reasons, but I submitted it. I got it taken care of. I have access completely to the entire building. There were no issues, as I mentioned before. So I, I'm clear. I think you're clear. Mr. Ebersol is clear? Now, you're going to be going up for your fingerprints, right? Okay, so you, what is the status on hers?
There, uh, she just needs to do the, uh, the exam.
Okay.
Or the.
So she'll be cleared soon. And then, uh, Mr. Burden? Okay, so the only one left is Mr. Sellers. Mr. Sellers is the only one that needs to do that. He's been cleared, Mr. Sellers? Okay, so he has not been cleared.
Well, I'd like to see it on the agenda because it would prevent any future issues. Like, if it's already like a ruling, this is the procedure, then it squashes any potential problems in the future.
Put it on the agenda. Is that it? Okay, so the time now is eight forty-one PM. We will now be closing the open session, and we'll be moving into executive session so that everybody can get home as soon as possible. Um, the time is, again, eight forty-one PM going to the closed session, um, now. It was nine oh six PM. We came out of executive session. We are now in open session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
Okay, and motion made by Councilwoman Weaver, second by Mr. Burden. Call the vote, Ms. Weaver. A, yay for the term. Mr. Ebersol?
Approve.
Mr. Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Burden?
Yeah.
And we have missing Mr. Sellers, who walked out prior to the executive session in protest. Put a note to the record. Carrie's four oh, uh, four with one missing. Got it, four zero, one missing. Thank you, gentlemen.